I was just wondering if you knew, okay.
Okay, we are on live stream. Welcome, this is the Jordan School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, and we are at the J A T C South Building. And this is our study session. We've got five board members present, Mr. Barnett, Ms. Dean, Ms. Richards, I'm Ms. Miller, and Mr. Robinson. Mr. Dunford had a work obligation until four, so he will be here shortly. And Ms. George is also on her way. So we are going to start with our first agenda item, and that is some information on our Portrait of a Graduate. And this is a process that we started as a board. We started reviewing our ends policies, and our first ends policy was our mission statement. And as we looked at that mission statement, we decided it needed to be revised and decided to start this process of looking into doing a Portrait of a Graduate for our district. Our state has done one, and several other districts have done one, and so we want to do one as a district. And so part of that, that process is now, has been to do an RFP. So we are going to get some information from Dr. Godfrey and Ms. Carolyn Goff, welcome. And we'll get information on this. It's also on our business meeting agenda to vote on the bid for that. And so I will kind of follow up with that and make sure that's still okay at the end of this discussion. So Dr. Godfrey, do you have anything to lead out with?
I just want to quickly turn it over to Carolyn. She and her team have worked really hard on this, and I appreciated the board's direction initially, looking at the original proposal to be sure that we were asking the right questions of potential vendors that we might be working with. Vendors turn into partners once the approval happens. And I'm excited about this process. I can continue to hear about Portrait of a Graduate and the work around Portrait of a Graduate at various conferences and meetings and events. And it always feels good to know, okay, we're on our way, we're gonna, we're gonna be started anytime now, now that we can get this in place. I appreciate the work that Carolyn and, and her team have put into this. And so I'll turn it right over to her.
Thank you. Well, thank you, and it's nice to be able to follow up with you again. We have met about this several times, so we're going to continue this conversation. And these slides, some of them are just simply a reminder of where we are and what we have done, especially with junior board members. And so we've just wanted to put a couple of slides from earlier presentation, just to remind everybody that Portrait of a Graduate is really stemming from the understanding that is happening throughout the nation, really, and especially with higher education, business leaders, just recognizing the importance of soft skills, if you will, competencies, dispositions, a lot of people call them different things. But just recognizing this, this higher order thinking that they'd really like to be able to see coming from schools and from specific, you know, from high school graduates. We're recognizing that jobs are changing, that some jobs aren't even created yet that will be needed, or, you know, skills that our students will need to have for the 21st century. The age of the internet has drastically changed the way we deliver content. People can get anything, pretty much, pretty quickly. And so the way that teachers are teaching also has needed to shift to more competency-based types of teaching. And so we'll just quickly remind you that learning skills, literacy skills, life skills, whether you call them skills, dispositions, competencies, there's lots of different terms, but the idea is how do you help somebody prepare for life beyond high school? What does that look like? And whether they go into a, a job field, or whether they go to higher education, the idea is, again, that we look beyond content only, things that can be looked up on the internet to see more of what kinds of skills we can offer for students. As Ms. Miller mentioned, the state of Utah actually has a Portrait of a Graduate for the entire state, and theirs is quite vast. It's because it was trying to cover the entire state. Most people recommend that there's about four to six competencies. The state had 13, but it's also got a much more comprehensive look at the whole state. And so they've done a really nice job. In fact, as you read earlier, they're one of the only state boards of education to actually have a Portrait of a Graduate at this point. So they were kind of leading the way. But the, the trend is spreading. And so you have lots of different states, lots of different districts who are now joining the ranks with different types of portraits. You'll notice this one is Journey of a Graduate. It's, sometimes it's portrait, sometimes it's, you know, something else that portrays what it is that they want to have happen for their graduates. But the point of it still remains that a Portrait of a Graduate, our 21st century deeper learning vision for all students. That's the heart of it. Coupled with that, you also hear the term strategic plan. Strategic plan is what we actually prioritize for the next. It's either three to five, four to six years with goals and strategies for accomplishing each priority. It's taking the bigger vision of Portrait of a Graduate, the competencies we want students to have at the end of their time with us, and it's strategically acting upon that within a timeframe. And so you'll hear about those two things that often go hand in hand, and districts, again, throughout the, the, the nation are coming up with very specific strategic plans. You can see in the corner there, this one is from 2021 to 2025. They're very time-bound to say, we will do these things within this timeframe to accomplish our goals of helping students achieve this, these competencies. So to that end, we started the conversation with our board and started talking about Portrait of a Graduate and doing the work that we have ourselves. And we recognized that it was a significant lift, lots of parts and pieces. And so the board requested that we look for an outside consultant group who could help us with these processes. So we realized that with some of the requests coming from the board, it was easier to do what's called a Statement of Qualification, an SOQ, rather than an RFP, because it was almost too hard to pinpoint the exact cost when we were talking about lots of options for things that could be included in this process. So we went about doing an SOQ, a Statement of Qualifications. Eight consulting companies applied, six met the criteria, and we put a lot of criteria in there for them to consider, quite vast as far as our expectations. The staff, we had a committee that reviewed the proposals from six organizations over the course of two days, studied all of their fairly significant, here's one, fairly significant proposal that they sent us. We ranked the consultant groups from highest to lowest, and I met with the highest ranking organization to begin a discussion on what can be delivered and the different price points, since there wasn't a concrete actual bid. It's not like an RFP. The prices and work can be negotiated even further, that's the benefit of an SOQ. But hopefully, we can arrive at an agreement. If not, we have to say goodbye to the highest ranking company and we go on to the next highest-ranked company. So this is education elements. They were the one that was highest-ranked in the SOQ process. And so they began to provide us with information that will help us to understand them better. So that's what I have some slides that they put together that I'm presenting to you. They shared what they bring to their work together. And a lot of this information should be in board docs, so if you want to spend a longer time with it, you would be able to, to do so. I liked the fact that, you'll notice it says perspective, we've worked with 320-plus school districts in 42 states over 11 years to help them with cross-pollination, sharing, learning, their work and support. And of course, they talked a lot about being able to focus on people and to hopefully experience joy in the process. They also proposed their expertise and experience. I highlighted a few things out of this lengthy slide, but just the specialized knowledge and experience, I liked that I noticed here on this piece that it says they provide unbiased third-party perspective, so objectively looking in at a district. They could help to manage the planning process and the deliverable creation with part of their team. They're skilled at facilitating stakeholder engagement and communication, and they would help in evaluating the plan's progress and making necessary adjustments along the way. Helping people stay on track is what they're really good at in meeting their deadlines, and I thought that was helpful as well. They emphasize the importance of process and the fact that it allows for collaboration, engagement among constituent groups. They really emphasize the, emphasize the, the fact that the process provides an opportunity for learning, and that's where we get the most, most in-depth information as we are participating in the process. And this is a lot, again, on this slide, but I'll highlight a couple of key elements. I liked that they, or at least it was helpful to me, that this group outlined what they could do for us and what our responsibilities are. So it's kind of like, who's lifting what, who's doing what? And they talked about the fact that they could share updates with the board regularly, sending out communications, they would synthesize constituent data, provide recommendations based on that data, provide guidance, again, keeping us on track and meeting deadlines that we had set for ourselves, and then creating and helping with the deliverables. In the meantime, it outlines what Jordan School District will be doing, and this, by the way, is a fraction of the plan that they have outlined. Also in your documents, it talks about scope of work. So they've got a very detailed outline, which helps to understand what we would be doing versus what they could do for us during the whole process. One of the things that the board had specifically requested, and this ultimately is why this was what led this company to rank the highest, they were the most detailed in their levels of support, because the board had said, well, how much are they involved? We don't want them to run over this program, but at the same time, we would like their help. So Education Elements was able to provide us with three levels of support, and they have put a price on each of those levels, which could still be negotiated at the same time. They've listed for us, this is the work, this is the lift, all three price points, you're going to get, are their services for all of the elements that they've listed in here. It's just how much you want them involved. And so that's what these next three slides are. For light support, you can see that they've even put some bars onto the, the side here that suggests that, you know, the district ownership of the deliverables is high, because we create and we do all of it. The facilitation from Ed Elements is kind of low to, to medium there, but that also puts a, a much greater expectation on the district to move forward with this, keep ourselves moving forward and making sure we're, we're kind of meeting our own timelines and expectations. So it, it mentions the pros and cons. Yes, there's a great opportunity to build ownership and commitment, it will stretch the district staff, resources and capacity to do this work in a timely way. But at, at the same time, they've listed all of that out with their price point. This one is a more moderate support. Again, the pros and cons, it's a little bit less lift on the district, there's still the, the same amount of ownership, they're a little bit more involved in the facilitation, so balances their expertise and, and the district knowledge, resulting in a more tailored plan. Provides JSD with adequate support and, but it could require more time and effort from district staff than the light support model.
Question? Are these figures, just, it's a one-time charge for the life of the project?
Whole thing, yep, one time. And in this scope of work, I asked them to detail an invoice, a list of every single thing that would be included in this. So in your document, you can see how many meetings, how many phone calls, how many meet, how many different times we would be gathering, all that is listed for each of these at that price point. And then the comprehensive support would be, of course, the most significant. Talked about the fact that, you know, some of the pros there, external experts bring a fresh perspective, unbiased opinions. They also mention, I mean, they can gather and, and analyze and synthesize all kinds of data. The, the cons, the strategic plan and Portrait of a Graduate may lack a complete understanding of the district's unique needs and culture, and there's a limited degree of ownership. They actually didn't recommend this. This was not their preferred model. They've done this with people before, but I think that it's kind of as expected. They do most of the work and the ownership is not as great. The projected timeline that they even provided was, they can and have worked with multiple districts and have finished both pieces within eight months. That seemed pretty fast compared to what I had been thinking about before, but at the same time, they said we could, you know, potentially, sometimes it can go further than that, but they gave several rationale as to why the, the move would be more quick because, you know, people lose interest. And there's, if there's a delay over the course of, of time, it becomes harder for people to, you know, be excited and motivated to finish the work. So talking with one of the project managers that put together the, the plan, he said the summer is actually a really great time to start. It, it really opens up, gives people in the fall an opportunity to say, oh, this is kind of new and fun and fresh, and we can move forward with that. So they've got, they've aligned, as you can see, they've got different phases. So the plan and align phase, the foundations, the design to launch phase, and of course, it can take potentially longer, but based on all the work they've done with all the different districts they've worked with, they are pretty secure in knowing that this can happen within this timeframe. It's just a matter of if, is that what we're interested in and are we ready for, for that type of, of work? The, the teaming and governance, they talked very, at length, both within their, their request, as well as the, some of the different slides with the different teams that exist. They've made note of, you know, a project leader, project team that helps to set up the steering team, which is a, a few more people, there's, you know, there's about 15 people on the steering team, whereas the project team is a, is a team of four, probably district leadership. And then from the steering team, they have different groups that help to plan. It basically shows how it cascades, so that you get more and more involvement from people at differing levels that help to do the, the work and the lift. That was very detailed in their SOQ, and, you know, there's a lot more information. I also included the SOQ in the board doc, so if you wanted to read all of their lengthy proposal, you could, but we, we, we read it, and it has quite a bit of detail, and this is just one of the slides that I pulled out to kind of illustrate how they intend to work with different groups within the district. Finally, I just pulled out from their SOQ, some of the other pieces, the other, just to show you the different look, so that, you know, we could see that, for instance, this, they're calling this one, or whatever district this is, a Journey of a Warrior was their outline, but looks very different than Enterprise Charter School, that, you know, their, their end product was reflective of their, their group, which is different than Portrait of a Learner, which was their, this particular district's understanding of how they wanted to be able to proceed. They also have worked with multiple districts, again, on strategic planning. And then you can see, and I didn't, I didn't put all of those in, but they are in this here, and then you could go online to see more of what each specific district has done with their strategic plan. They all look very different from each other. They have, you know, very different goals and expectations, timelines, how people were involved with the work. So it was just nice to see a variety from this company of the different entities with whom they've worked. And lastly, just in your, in your, the resources there, you'll see that those handouts are available to you, the scope of work and support options, which is a, a much more detailed outline of those phases, the, the plan and align phase, the foundations phase, and so forth and so on. So they've detailed it. This is also the document where you can find the itemized list of what it is that they would offer, and according to the light, the moderate, and the comprehensive support. Now, if you're interested in something in between, you know, that, that's why it's an SOQ. Those are price points that could be potentially negotiated further. At the same time, the one I am recommending to the board would be a moderate support, right in the middle, where we have the benefit of a consulting group helping us, but it still has our unique blend and, and ownership on it, so we have still complete say and control over everything that happens, but they are a nice guiding entity to help us stay focused on the things that, that we need to do within a timeframe, as well as helping lift with the focus groups, knowing how and to, to run focus groups, having done it many times, and, and just the ways to do that. And I spent some time talking with Drew, who's one of the project managers for this, and asking him multiple questions about what that looks like. And, you know, he said you, we can design it how you want it to look, truthfully, but with a lot of experience, they were feeling comfortable about how they have done that in the past. They even had, within the SOQ, some sample survey questions that they have sent out. They know how many people to work with in focus groups to get some of the better answers. And they have a list of different types of communications and groups with whom they meet. Usually that process takes about three days, and they help, we help them to organize those groups, but they come in and do primarily the, the meeting, the organizing, the, getting the objective feedback, so that it's, people are being truthful with them and giving good information that they can use and, and take back and bring back to the committees that would then process that information and move forward with our recommended competencies. I asked about, how do you do Portrait of a Graduate and strategic plan at the same time? Because it seemed like a lot of things to do at once, and they said, well, one informs the other, but there's no reason to go through the entire process of Portrait of a Graduate and then start on a strategic plan. And he talked about the way that, that the consultancy can work with the building of a plan around Portrait of a Graduate as it's emerging, and so both of them can be completed within eight months. So it's really whether or not that is where we want to go. So it's really whether or not that is where we want to go and how much more information we need to be able to select this particular company, should we choose for this work.
Thank you. That's very helpful and informative information. Board members, do you have questions?
Are we approving this company and the level of support tonight?
That is your option, if you were to do that. You, you certainly don't have to. That's just, it's an option that exists for you.
We can approve the company and not, um, come up with the level of support?
Yeah, I mean, if you, you would probably need a number to approve the bid in the general meeting, but at the same time, it, you know, you could, we could work that out. That's part of the negotiated part.
I'm, I'm looking at, um, the breakdown, according to the three levels.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it looks like a lot of coverage from them. I love, I love that. But let's say we approve a certain amount, let's say the moderate, and, you know, maybe our phone calls or our virtual visits go over what they have listed. What happens then?
Okay. Said that we'll help you with the work. We'll, we'll keep you in, informed and we'll help you with the work. I asked him, what if it even goes to nine months? He says, yeah, we, we'll lock in at that moderate level and we'll walk you through. We'll, we won't leave until you're done.
Gonna go up?
No.
I think the timeline's a little short for me.
Any other questions?
And that, uh, that price, those different prices that we, that we saw, is that the comprehensive price? Or is it, are there, are there other things like, um, design work?
That's it. Everything is in there. Mm-hmm.
So if we agree to that amount, we get all of their services?
All of their services at that point.
We're used to approving construction bids, and so we're all like, are you sure that's all?
Change orders.
Right, change orders. Yeah, they don't exist in this, in this line of work. They, I asked the same question because I thought, you know, what if, what if we take a longer time? He, his, his reaction was actually quite interesting, and he said, well, we, it wouldn't be the first time that we've had to have hard conversations with people in order to move forward. That was his comment. So he said, it's, it's pretty normal that people get a little anxious and maybe nervous, and they help to help people work through that. That's, that's why they exist.
Will you go back to that timeline for me, please?
Uh-huh.
Right, the timeline surprises me, but as I think about it, I actually really like it because you, just momentum. You want to go and then keep going with it. And, and you don't want to like go out to your public and get all this feedback and have eight months go by and have done nothing with it.
That's exactly what he mentioned. That was exactly the point. He just said, once you get the momentum going, and he actually mentioned that the fall was a really good time to start that momentum. So where we thought we would be and where we are, I mean, it, it kind of has ended up in a good spot if we choose to go through this. Now, if you don't, if we don't decide to start it until later, there's, there's no problem. But eight months is basically, they even said it could be six to nine, but somewhere in that eight-month range is, they can have it done and, and, you know, and work with us and help us make sure that everybody feels comfortable. But I think you nailed it, which is the public wants to know what's happening with the information they've just provided.
Do we understand the time commitment from the board members in this timeline? Uh, you know, at, at which points are we involved? At what points are staff involved?
I noticed as I went back through the scope of work, I tried to look to see all the places where it mentioned the school board. And I did notice that, um, even within the plan and align, it talks about summaries being updated and communicated to the project team after each phase. Uh, uh, let's see, phase of work and written so as to be turnkeyed to key stakeholder groups such as the school board. I noticed that they had mentioned having a school board member on one of the teams so that there was a constant understanding of what was going on throughout the process. Not the whole board, but partial, and, you know, that there would be a, a, a way to have board involvement in that. And so as I was looking to see, I asked, I kind of was wondering that very question. And they have outlined, it's a longer document, so it takes a minute to read through, where the board fits in that process, that they're constantly involved in the summary of information. There's constant, in fact, it mentioned even, uh, you know, monthly and bi-monthly information updates coming to the board and along with at least one board member who is serving as, as part of the teams. So that would be an ongoing expectation. And I think, you know, again, depending on how much involvement that you choose, that could even be more. But I think they recognize the lift, again, for board members as well as for staff and district staff. And so they would work with us at our abilities to, to, to do what needs to be done. So kind of giving us, again, a choice on how we want that to happen.
Kind of coupling with what Mr. Barnett has said. Um, what do you see personally as, uh, involvement of your department, other departments in the district, and how do they come together? What, what, what is your, yeah, what is your plan?
One of the things on this slide that's almost too small to see here, um, talks about the teaming structure. And I like the fact that, I have to put my glasses on for this. I like the fact that, you know, it mentions very clearly, like a project team, uh, no more than four people, including an organizational leader, have significant time and resources to dedicate to strategic planning process, highly organized, detail-oriented, kind of breaks down what that responsibility is. Talks about a steering team, no more than 15 people. This team should represent multiple stakeholders, parents, community leaders, school leaders, district staff, teachers. Can, and this is where the board member potentially would come in. Then in their document with the scope of work, it talks about how many meetings would be involved for each of these teams. So looking at that, I could see that, yeah, this is, this is still time. I mean, it is a moderate amount of expectation put on us. I don't think that it could be my department by itself because that wouldn't be ownership from the district. And so we would probably reflect on multiple. And that's part of the, the project team and the steering team would be who are, what key individuals from inside the district, as well as outside the district, need to be involved in this process. Um, still, eight months is a lot, and I'm thinking about all the things that we have going on. And so, yeah, there's, there's a lot still that we would have to be figuring out. And so I think that would be a cabinet-level discussion to say, you know, who could do this? How, you know, who would fill these roles? Um, you know, it would definitely take a lot of us having some conversation about that.
Notice Canyons was a reference. You know how, what level they were involved?
Uh, they had a moderate level.
Have you talked to Canyons?
I haven't. The only thing we did is that we, um, looked at their RFP to get some of the thoughts and ideas about how they went to, to bid with this.
You know, do you know where they are in their timeline?
They're finished.
They're done?
Yeah. Here's their, in fact, you'll notice on that slide, see the last one on the, right on the corner there, Canyons. Yeah, done.
I did talk with a board member from Canyons at one of our conferences that was very complimentary of the process. Loved being involved in it and felt really good about where they ended up.
And I was, was listening to one of their board meetings about a year ago that, when Education Elements was there and they were talking about their strategic plan. It was interesting.
Ed Elements actually is willing to come to these meetings and to present out, to share, to express kind of where they are, rationale, basically just help with the lift.
They have an office locally here?
They do not. Um, they're located in San Francisco, but they have consultants throughout the country. And some of those could be here, some of them could be other places. So that's part of the cost associated with that, and that's why they try to do their work virtually for the most part, but in some times they will be here in person. But on the moderate plan, there's about seven total in-person days that they will come to our district because of the cost associated with it. And the rest would be, you know, virtual and phone calls and things like that. Um, I actually talked to somebody at one point who had been a teacher in Jordan School District that now works for this company. And, uh, that was a, he, he also gave a lot of, um, of course, high praise for the group, which was expected, but I did appreciate the fact that he had some insight and, you know, some personal insight, and, and so he understood some of the things. But they would, uh, I don't know if that person will be involved at all in our project. It's just based upon their, who they choose. They did list a number of people in their SOQ, and right at the beginning, you can see some of their names. I don't know if those are the exact people they would send, and, because they would be coming from other places, but we could see that there was at least a team of four.
Okay, so this is on our agenda to be voted on in our business meeting. So my question is, are you comfortable with that or do you need more time?
Another question?
Yep, go ahead.
There's a lot of information here, obviously. How many people in Jordan School District have read through this besides you?
Well, this is part of the RFP SOQ process. It's not really technically public information at this point. Uh, this is obviously the first that I'm sure anybody listening would have heard some of the details of this, but it's also because it is negotiable. So as far as, there was a committee of people that looked through all of these documents, but that, to that extent, plus our, my conversation was this with the superintendent and now you.
But just a, maybe a handful?
A handful.
And were there any items in any of this that kind of popped out, any red flags, any concerns? I guess the reason I ask is because I can spend a few hours and go read through this and see if anything pops out to me, or I can ask you and the group that you had read through it and ask if there's anything that was a concern to you.
Sure. I, I didn't, uh, the, one of the reasons that they're the highest ranked was because nothing really popped out at me that was a huge red flag. In fact, one of the things that I wanted to see from this group was the fact that they had a lot of track history behind them of having done this before. And so the fact that I was able to share with you, you know, some of these pieces, that was a, that was a big concern when we were looking through all of these, um, consultant groups. If they couldn't produce both, a portrait of a graduate and a strategic plan, then, you know, they, they, they weren't ranked as high. Um, I was appreciative of the fact that this group could provide both and multiple examples. And so I could tell that they had done this work and that it looked different throughout all of their, their samples, all of the different samples they provided. And so that actually spoke well of this particular group to me. So I, I, that was one of the reasons that, you know, we ranked them the highest.
What happens after February 2024? It's done now, it's packaged. I'd noticed at Canyons and at individual schools kind of developing their own. Is, is there a process passed when they're done with this?
We can decide what it is that we want to do. The implementation phase, and one of the things that, again, this company spoke to was the fact that if it sits on a shelf, it isn't really doing any good to anybody. It was a nice exercise and a good process, but if it's not actually influencing anything, it's not very valuable. So the implementation, they would continue to potentially help with ideas and thoughts and ways to, to implement. Uh, our hope and expectation is that schools wouldn't reinvent the wheel, that we wouldn't want them to necessarily come up with additional portrait of a graduate, but that they would utilize it, much as Alpine has done, to say, we can now coalesce around this document to create our school goals every year, to create our TSSA plans, to be able to continue working toward what we see based in the district's portrait of a graduate, that it would inform decisions about how to spend money, that it would inform decisions about, uh, you know, how to offer classes, teaching, all of the different things, and that we would be able to, to jump on board with that. If, whatever strategic plan we come up with that, you know, very much would, would capitalize on the, the ends policies that we've already been talking about, um, that would be another, uh, item around which to coalesce, where schools can say, yeah, we're going to focus on one of these district priorities, and this is going to be where we go this year, and we're not spending any money if it doesn't focus on this. So it just really provides that direction for the full implementation of how to make sure that schools are operating along the document that, that we've created.
Thank you. We've operated, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Operated as a school district for, how, how, how long have we been a school district? Ninety years, a hundred years?
Over a century, yes.
Over a century. Without a portrait of a graduate, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
A hundred years, and we haven't had a portrait of a graduate. And we've produced some pretty good students, some pretty good people have gone through the system and come out good and, and intelligent and been active, um, good members of society. So I guess my question is, why do we need one now? Why do we need to spend the time and the 200 grand or whatever it's going to cost us? If we, if we've already been successful, what is this effort going to give us that we've, that we've been missing for the past hundred years?
I don't think we've ever had to deal with the 21st century. The environment has changed and the landscape has changed. And as I mentioned earlier, a hundred years ago, they didn't have the internet.
Well, five years ago then.
Yeah. Well, I think this is where, you know, people have been moving for the last 20 and 30 years was being able to move into the phase of, we, we are recognizing that the landscape has changed so significantly that we have to prepare students to meet it with 21st century skills. And it's not that we haven't been doing that for the last hundred years, but the skills, I think, are very much changing over the course of time. And that's where content that we have been excellent at delivering and skills that were needed for 20, 30 years ago have, just are vastly changing, and I think that that is where we're headed, is how do we match what the content and the skill level is for jobs that are changing so rapidly in this particular day and age? And things that haven't even been created, how do we anticipate that for the next 20 or 30 or 50 years? It's not to say that it wasn't important 100 years ago, surely it was, but they were, I think, working out the beats in the field, so I think it was a little bit easier. But, uh, you know, we're definitely moving in a, in a, at a speed that, that necessitates something that's very clear on what we hope that graduates will be and become when they leave our system.
I will add too that this is not the first time the district has considered going through a process like this. In fact, I would argue that we've gone through it many times over the past however many years. Um, you know, prior, probably the last time we did it was maybe 10 years ago, it was before I was on the board, but went through an extensive process of the community and different stakeholders and to find out what was important and ends policies were created. In fact, our current ends policies that we've been using at that time were cre- were created. And that was also, I believe, with the use of an outside consultant also. And so, you know, for me, that's, it's just a process that, you know, every years or so, what we developed in the past and what our schools were dealing with 10 years ago and what our community was like 10 years ago has changed. And so it's an important part for us. This outreach to the community part is the part that I am really excited about. It's an important part for us to have an organized strategic method of getting feedback from our community about what they want in our schools and what's important in our schools so that we as a board can, can make decisions, knowing that this is what is important to our community. And I think that changes through the years, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, back to my, my question. Do you, this is on, we put this on for a vote today, knowing that we may or may not be ready for it. So my question is, are you ready for a vote today or do you want more time on it?
I would prefer more time.
Me too.
I appreciate the work done to present it to us. That's in no way a reflection of that. I just would like more time to digest it.
I'm okay approving this company and bringing back the level of commitment at another time.
As far as the light, moderate? Okay, any others?
I'm ready to approve both tonight.
Same.
Um, it, does this do anything to that proposed timeline if we wait a month?
Um, I think they mentioned it could start in July, so I don't, I think you could still, well, we could wait a month.
Okay. Um, I, I, uh, I'm, I'm okay moving ahead tonight.
Okay. Um, I, I, uh, I'm, I'm okay moving ahead tonight. But I want to make sure that the whole board is ready for that. So I think we will go ahead and hold on that vote then tonight. Do I?
Would you like us to just put it on the agenda for study session in our next meeting?
Yeah.
For further discussion? Does that work? Okay. And then a potential vote at the end of May?
End of May.
Which will still give time to start in July.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Right.
So when I get to that part of the agenda, do I need a motion to table the vote? What's the correct motion?
Paul will tell us before that time which exact parliamentary procedure we might invoke.
Let us know by six thirty, what motion we need. Okay.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We really appreciate, um, you and all the information that you've provided to us too and all the backup documents is really helpful.
Yep.
Thank you and thank your staff also for all their work on this.
Thanks, Carolyn.
All right, our next agenda item is our calendar committee recommendations for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we will welcome Mr. Caleb Olson to the table. And Dr. Anderson, do you have anything for us to start?
Yeah, yeah.
And then also, and then Caleb, you can introduce. You've got more people coming, so we'll let you introduce them too. Okay.
Thank you, President Miller. We do have some members of the calendar committee that I'll introduce here briefly. Um, just wanted to start out by saying this is, uh, the intent of, of tonight is to review with the board some of the process that goes into making, um, creating the calendar, uh, with the committee. We also, uh, will present options for the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, school year calendars. We have two options to present tonight. Now that's not, so not for this coming school year, but the following. We try to do it, um, you know, a little over a year in advance to give families plenty of time to, to plan and, and, uh, work around what they need to. And knowing, you know, from time to time, knowing how stressful this job can be, I just appreciate Mr. Olson so much and, and the calendar committee's work. I thought I'd from time to time lighten the mood a little bit and send him some jokes from time to time about calendars. Um, you know, things like, I had a friend that was fired from the calendar committee. All he did was take a day off.
Put you forward those to the rest of the committee.
Only has dates like the first, third, fifth and seventh. It's very odd. Mr. Olson didn't, he didn't appreciate that as, quite as much as I thought he would, so. Uh, but, you know, just trying to lighten the load from time to time.
Now, because you've started it, I'm going to say that the last day of this year will be one, two, three, one, two, three. Twelve thirty-one, twenty-three, one, two, three, one, two, three.
I love days like that. And, and next year, you know.
Much more to celebrate than on any normal New Year's Eve.
Exactly. Every February throughout the rest of this decade, we'll have a, we'll have a special day with a two, three, two, three, or a two, four, two, four. You know, so lots of, lots of things to celebrate in the calendar world. Um, and Mr. Barnett's question of, of, uh, you know, when we became a district, I beg the question for me. Have we always had a calendar committee back from nineteen oh five or whenever, you know, when we first began, uh, to be a school district? I think this calendar, uh, uh, policy that we're going to be referencing tonight actually came into existence in nineteen sixty-nine. And I'll just say that the board in the late sixties and early seventies was busy with, kept with policy implementation. There was a lot of policy going on at that time. So we have had a policy on the calendar development since nineteen sixty-nine and Mr. Olson's going to give a brief overview of some of the many, many changes we've made to the, uh, committee or the policies since then. So just want to recognize his hard work and the work of the committee we have with us tonight. Um, commit, calendar committee members, Principal Laurie Goodsell. Uh, we have, uh, Jackie Gale, uh, who's been on the calendar for a long time, uh, the calendar committee. How many years?
Two or three.
Yeah, okay. And we have with us Shree Oliver as well from the calendar committee. So appreciate them being here tonight. And, uh, it's a fitting that we're meeting the day after, uh,
Ike Anderson Day, right?
Uh, Godfrey and Larson Day was the official title.
It was Godfrey Larson Day. I, I was fine to not take all of the, the, the honor on that. But yeah, we're meeting the day after Godfrey Larson Day. Something we've never done in the past, an innovative day, mid-spring recess, that I think was well received by most people. And, uh, just appreciate the out of the box thinking that this committee has done over the years. So with that, I'll turn it to, uh, Mr. Olson.
Thank you. Uh, we're, I'm excited to be here and to have members of the committee. Um, I believe they're presenting a skit for you later, so hopefully that's good to go and we're excited to hear that from them. We have the calendar process, which we bring to you every year. But because it's something we do only once a year, there are things that can slip from all of our minds. And we have two new board members, so we wanted to take a few minutes to go over the calendar process that we follow here in the district. Before we do that, however, I'm going to give the board a pop quiz. It is closed book, closed note. Uh, you may talk to your neighbors, you may not. Superintendent, talk to Dr. Anderson, he knows the answers. I'll keep an eye on it. I will move seats if I have to, so you have been warned. It's a very simple quiz. There are six questions. I'm going to show you six different pictures of our buildings, our schools, and I just need you to identify them. Um, we'll give you about fifteen or twenty seconds total because, I mean, it's, should be simple for, for people of your knowledge of the district. So here we go. Your six, uh, questions are?
Failure encouraging to you, uh, because that's the point you're trying to make.
I'm just.
Failure discouraging.
I'm just presenting the content. I, any sort of connection you want to draw would be a personal decision. All right, here are your six questions. If you would, uh, I'll watch the time. I should have asked the Jordan Youth Symphony if they could play the Jeopardy theme, but I did not think to ask them in advance. We'll, we'll give you maybe five more seconds. No, those are different buildings. Those are all different.
They all look the same.
I understand, but that's not what you were asked to do tonight, Ms. Richards, so. Okay. Any guesses on those six?
Number one is Golden Fields Elementary School.
One of them is Golden Fields, but it is not number one.
Then it's number six.
It is also not number six.
It's number four.
The answers are, number one is Aspen. Number two is Copper Canyon. Number three is Golden Fields, but I had to flip the school's image to make them all line up the same. Number four, Rose Creek. Number five, Hayden Peak, again, had to flip the image. And number six, Mountain Point. Uh, Dr. Anderson pointed out, you, you can tell the age of the school by how white the roof is, so. That, that could have been a point that you could have used to, to succeed on the quiz. Unfortunately, that, uh, we'll remediate this and, and we'll try it again in the future, but.
I had them all right.
If you'll provide your work to Dr. Anderson, he'll check. So, why do we have schools that look the same? I, I tried to think of a way to present this, one to the members of the board, but also to community members. Because these sort of questions come up every year when we do the calendar and this is, I thought, an interesting way we could connect some dots. Why do we have schools that look the same? Well, the answer simply is that there are a number of reasons. One of them is efficiency. It's easier to build schools that are the same plan. We, if we work with the same contractors, they've done it more than once, the same layouts, we know how that building functions. We can iterate. If we notice something that's not working in a building, on the next time we build it, we can improve. We can make corrections, we can make revisions, we can make enhancements. There's cost savings. We don't start from zero every time. We have the plans and we can reuse them. That saves the district quite a bit of money. And familiarity. It's got to be easier for our maintenance, uh, personnel, our ESPs. If, uh, there's an issue with an air handler, they don't have to look up where the air handler is every time they go to a building. It's in the same place for a lot of these floor plans. We also have schools that look the same because we follow building code. There's a set of rules on what you can and can't do in a building. And following those rules gets you a functional building. I came across this quote from FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, that said, "Building codes are the minimum design and construction requirements to ensure safe and resilient structures. Following those codes gets us safe and resilient buildings." I reached out to, uh, Dave Rostrum and Ian Erickson, our capital, our director of new construction and our capital outlay manager. And I just wanted their thoughts on building codes. And, uh, Dave Rostrum said something that really stood out to me. He said, "In building code, there's a minimum width of a hallway. There is a size that you cannot have a hallway narrower than that point. You can go bigger." So I reached out to some of my administrator friends. Uh, Mr. Growth at South Hill sent me this picture. Without knowing why I wanted a picture of the schools, but I love that he picked this because you can see in this hallway at South Hills, the hallway gets narrower about halfway down. So the district, when building a school, has a minimum hallway size. We can make bigger hallways if we want, but the thing to keep in mind is there's a trade-off. If we build a bigger hallway, it costs more. Or there are utilities or things that have to be adjusted. The building code sets a minimum, sets the floor. We can go above that if we're prepared to accept the trade-offs. In this hallway, this section gets a lot of use, so it makes sense for it to be wider. So why do we have calendars that look the same? Well, we have calendars that look the same for efficiency. It's a lot easier if you are, um, making plans for a school or a district or a family. If you know that fall recess will be in October and spring recess will be sometime in the spring. And I think the music really emphasizes the points I'm trying to make, so I appreciate the Youth Symphony. Iteration. We can fix things from one year to the next. The calendar is cyclical and we repeat calendars every five to seven or so years. So if something doesn't work this year, the next time that calendar comes up, we can make a tweak, we can make an adjustment. There are cost savings. Some of the things that we follow on our calendars are negotiated or are in law. And if we started over every time and had to renegotiate employee group contracts, had to work things out with the state every time, it would be significant expense. By keeping similar calendars, we save some of that money. And finally, there's familiarity. People like a calendar that is similar to ones they've had in the past. We also have calendars that look the same because we have a calendar code that we follow, just like a building code. I came across this quote, um, from me tonight in this meeting that says, "Calendar codes are the minimum design and construction requirements to ensure safe and resilient calendars." Just like with a building code. We follow those guidelines to ensure that we have a calendar that's successful. Now, in Board Docs, you have a document that looks like this. This is a document that we put together for members of the calendar committee that lists the calendar code that we follow. I've summarized some of them here. There are basically three areas. And the one in Board Docs has some links. They should have come across as hyperlinks, so you could look at the, the code or the policy if necessary. We have things that are in Utah law. We have things that are in district policy. We have things that are in preference or that are, we schedule because of precedent in doing them in previous years. For instance, a hundred and eighty instructional days are required by Utah law. We don't have the option to do less than that. We could do more than that. Like I said, with a building code, you can go above, but there's a trade-off. If we go above a hundred and eighty days, it costs more because we have to negotiate higher contracts. Um, ho- uh, holidays. Some of the holidays, fall, fall break, fall recess, is not in state law. We don't have to have a fall recess. But Jordan District Policy D two oh seven says we will schedule a fall recess. Some things are set by precedent or preference. Uh, the superintendent added Health and Wellness Day two years ago and we defer to where Cabinet says that should go, and so that's why it's in February. There are some on here that may seem a little more obscure. For instance, under Utah law, you'll notice there's one that says forty-three days per quarter. There is not anything in Utah law that says that we have to have forty-three days per quarter. There is, however, something in Utah law that says, if we're going to teach in-person driver's education classes, we have to get twenty-seven hours of seat time. Twenty-seven hours of seat time off of the average high school period of eighty-five minutes over a two-week window means that we need to have forty-two days if everything is perfect and there are no assemblies, no pep rallies, no nothing that makes the schedule different to hit twenty-seven hours. So to be safe, forty-three days is the minimum that we follow. So that's a law requirement that influences how long our, our quarters are. Other districts have made decisions about driver's ed that impact their ability to, to offer that. These, however, are the, the guidelines that we follow. If there are any the board would like to, to talk about, I'm happy to, or you can refer to the, the notes on the document that you have in Board Docs. But happy to clarify any of those that, um, may be a question or a concern to you or will continue on. There is no quiz on these later on, just FYI as you're.
I appreciate that document you put on Board Docs. It was interesting to be able to see what was law and policy and preference.
So grade transmittal day, can you explain that to us? It's not law or preference.
Grade transmittal days are Jordan District policy. Um, in policy, it says that we will have them and it says that they will be the first day after, the first instructional day after the last day of the quarter. They're not a, a legal requirement. That's something that's been negotiated and is in policy in Jordan School District.
Are those paid days for teachers?
The salary for those days is included in the base teacher contract. The day itself is not a contract.
And the day doesn't count as a school day?
No, it does not. Shree just mentioned, we have kindergarten testing on here twice, once under Utah law and once under precedent and preference. By Utah law, we're allowed for kindergarten to take up to twelve days of the school year and use those for testing. We usually do six in the, in the, in August and six in May. When we use those days is a district decision. So we schedule the August days at the beginning of the school year and we schedule the May days before Memorial Day. So that's Utah law and district preference on where that falls on the calendar. So just like.
I wonder why we have a calendaring committee?
Well, you just wait one more slide. Just like a building has an inspector to make sure it's functional, a calendar in the Jordan School District has Policy D two oh seven and the calendar committee.
That was two slides, though.
I was on the slide. This slide, I have to give a big thanks to Roxanne in the superintendent's office. I asked her if she could maybe help me with the last change or two for D two oh seven. She brought me a giant stack of papers for all of the changes going back to two thousand and seven. I don't know if there is a policy in the district that has gone through as many changes from two thousand and seven to now as the calendar, uh, policy has. You can see we have everything from in two thousand and seven. We officially ended UEA recess and began fall recess. Prior to this, in policy, it said we would not have a fall recess in Jordan School District. We only had a UEA recess. All the way down to twenty twenty, where we got rid of, um, an alternate calendar. I'm not going to say year round because if I say it three times in board meeting, we have to generate a calendar for it. So you can just see the changes. We've changed the membership of the committee multiple times. We've added how holiday, or how, uh, conferences and days will be scheduled. Some of these are just minor tweaks. You'll notice in, um, let's see, two, twenty eighteen, we changed the calendar, uh, policy to say that secondary conferences were scheduled by midterm in first and third quarter. By means anytime up to midterm. Well, then that means that potentially in the fall, we have conferences in early September when teachers don't really know their students. So in twenty twenty, we changed that to say no sooner than midterm, to be midterm or later. Some of them have been minor tweaks like that, but the, the policy has changed, just like building codes change. If you look at our older buildings and our newer buildings, they're different. They were all built to what was safe at the time it was created. We also have members of the calendar committee. I reached out to the committee and asked if anyone would be willing to come tonight. Most of the time that I've been, uh, with the calendar committee, we've not had parents here because it's been COVID time and we've done virtual meetings and things, but we invited them to come. We have a wide range of experiences, so I asked them once they're done with their skit, of course, if they could just take a minute or two to share with you what their experience on the calendar committee has been. Um, maybe we'll start here and go this way because I think of any of our members and this cord won't go any further.
Okay, so I'm Shree Oliver. I've been on the committee for probably five years now, so I've done.
Supposed to do the skit first, though, Shree.
No, so I've been on it for five years and it's been great. I've asked for extensions because it's just so much fun and I really like being involved. Um, I've got two girls. They're both in middle school right now at South Hills. So, I mean, what else? What else do you want me to know? I mean, I, we were, I was on the committee.
Question.
Sure.
Shree, before she got on the committee, what she didn't know, and Shree, now that she knows, what would you tell the old Shree about coming onto the committee?
That's a great question. I, I liked it. So before, before I was on the committee, um, like I said, I've got two girls. I homeschooled them for two years. They've been in year-round school. They've been in traditional calendars. I've kind of seen the whole thing. So I kind of have a different view on the calendars as a lot of people, but I like that I had that experience and that I kind of understand where things are coming from. I think I would just tell me to be prepared to be inundated with tons of questions of, why can't we start after Labor Day and before Memorial Day? Because probably weekly I get that question. Um, but no, it's been a great experience and I've loved doing it. So, but.
Sorry, I'm trying to get closer to the microphone. Oh, look, this one has a long cord. Uh, I'm Laurie Goodsell. I'm the. I can talk really loud. Oh, I'm Laurie Goodsell. I'm the principal at Westland Elementary School. This was my first year on the calendaring committee, although I've worked for Jordan District for about fifteen years now and kind of you live and die by that calendar when you work in a school. Um, I thought that the committee was a really good experience. I like that it represented a wide range of, uh, well, actually all the levels of school, secondary and elementary. So, um, you know, ele- elementary folks like me would be talking about one thing and then high school would chime in and say, well, what about this? Or this happens at this time of year in high schools and something that I really don't have a frame of reference for necessarily. So I felt like there was, uh, there were a broad enough perspective of, of people that we really, everybody kind of, um, had a chance to, um, to contribute.
Okay, my name is Jackie Gale and I've been on the calendar committee since, uh, Antelope Canyon opened. I feel like I'm eating it. So, and let's see, where am I going with this now? I came on during the COVID time, so that was a very interesting experience. And I worked in the Logan City School District years ago, and the superintendent's secretary created the calendar. So there was no calendaring committee necessarily out there. So it's nice that there is a lot of input, and it's been very educational for me because I didn't understand how much went into this and how much there is that has to work together. It's a big jigsaw puzzle. And depending on where your days fall, you know, the schedule that we're going to look at, we have two weeks of vacation for Christmas, so it narrows your perspective of what you're able to do in other areas and things that are going on. So this has been fun, and it is nice to be able to explain to people that we have to have 43 days, and and there is a reason behind it, rather than why do they always have to do? And we have taken parent input. I think it was either the year, I can't remember which year that was, that we took input, if I was even on the committee yet or not, but we really try to take that into consideration. And then, like she was saying, we don't have a lot of idea of what's happening with AP testing or sports starting or ending and those things, so.
If any members of the Board have questions for our volunteer tributes, I would love the opportunity for them to talk.
I have one. When we created the policy recently, a few years back, we really wanted innovation, and we tried to scale back some of the requirements that weren't in state law. What laws, preferences, or board policies are still in place that are handcuffing you from being innovative, creative, and doing what you want to with calendar?
If you'd like to, sure.
I, I think the, like, a lot of people would say, like, the days, the 43 days, and I don't think that's a huge issue for me. There's a few things that we've always talked about with the 180 days. If we could cut that back a little bit and add 15 minutes to every day, year-round was able to do that. Why can't we do that now that we're all on the same schedule? Things like that would make it a lot easier. And as, I mean, that's, that's probably the biggest one, is days versus hours. But I know that that's not a board decision. That's more of a school or statewide thing, and so that's nothing that we can really deal with or change.
Can, because what I'm interested to know from the committee from time to time is what are those? And then we can work with people at the state to see if, you know, things can change. Because I agree with you, too. I, I think hours should be considered rather than days.
Yeah, I wish they would have switched that during COVID.
That's a very good answer. Thanks.
I'll just add in here, I just appreciate the thoughtful approach, and it, it's hard to think of a policy or something that we do that impacts more lives on a day-to-day basis. People plan their work schedule around this, our calendars. I know other businesses create their business calendars around our calendar. My wife, for instance, where she works, it's based on the Jordan School District calendar, and people plan vacations years in advance. I just had a father reach out to me, wondering if we had the 2026 calendar done yet, because they're planning a vacation. I said, "Not yet? But have I got a job for you?"
We're on it soon. We're on it.
So it, it impacts the day-to-day lives of our patrons in a big way, not just our parents and students, but even beyond that.
Other charter schools also use our calendar.
Correct.
I think Ms. Richards may have back, I won't say back in the day because that sounds-
A hundred years ago, Caleb?
When the district was formed in 1905, and you were in my position. May have worked with the Calendar Committee. It, it used to be monthly meetings all through the school year, a lot of time to make a calendar. When Travis took over, it kind of consolidated to one or two pretty intense days of work. And recently, we've been on two or three hours of work with the committee. Not because we take the job any less seriously, but because we have some wonderful people who come and are ready to share and participate. And one of the things I love most is, I did a little introduction when we met in person this year, and then put up this exact screen that you see. I put up a blank calendar and said, "All right, who has a suggestion? Where should we start?" And we just build a calendar from there. And there's some lively discussion and some debate, and if you're new, it's probably a little crazy to sit and watch, but it, we, we can do some really amazing things in, in really a short period of time. And I appreciate the, the parents and the ESPs and the licensed employees who participate. So that being said, I want to talk to you about the 24-25 options. I'm going to actually ask some of our Calendar Committee members to discuss the options themselves, but I wanted to talk to you about a, a shift we made in how we created the options this year. There have been comments from Board members in years previous that sometimes what we bring are a good option and a bad option for the calendar. And that has never been the intent of the Calendar Committee, but sometimes you make a really awesome calendar. And then to provide a second option, the only really way you can differentiate it is to make a not-so-good option, because you do the opposite of all the good things. We made a really awesome calendar this year, our first time through. But we realized at the end that it would have teachers coming back at the end of July, which is probably a non-starter, and they'd run us out of town. So we could have done that as a bad option, but we wanted to, to not have the perception that there was a good and a bad, or that we were trying to steer people to one option over another. What we'd like to do instead, this is a picture of the 1966 Volkswagen family of vehicles. What I like about this image I found is you can look at these and tell they're all Volkswagens. Similar headlights, similar styling, similar elements, similar features. But you can also tell that they have distinct purposes. If you have a large family, you're probably going to go towards the bus. If you're a young person on your own, maybe the, the Beetle is more your, your style. If you have a lot of kids, maybe the sporty ones aren't, aren't really going to be what you're looking for. But you can tell they're connected and have a similar purpose. We would like people, when they see the survey, to say, "That's a Jordan School District calendar." Just like you look at these and say, "Well, that's a Volkswagen." You can tell. It's a Volkswagen car. This is a Jordan District calendar. And it's not a good option or a bad option. They're different options addressing different needs. So that's what we tried to do this year. And so instead of an option A and an option B, we have a long break option and a short break option that we have brought to you. And copies of those should be in Board Docs. But if one of our committee members would like to talk us through a couple of the highlights of the long break option, Shree just talked, so maybe one of, you want to? Jackie, if you'd love to? Yes.
Yes, so the way that the days fell in the first option here is we have Christmas Eve on a Tuesday. So it, it gives us a longer break at that time. But then, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to-
Pull them apart.
So it, it puts us getting out of school a little bit later with that two-week option. What else do you want?
That, I mean-
The break, spring break is still, we did move that into April. There was some conversation amongst some, somewhere that didn't really love it in March. So we've moved that in this option as well.
Not a lot more you can say other than long breaks, because it's pretty self-explanatory. The, the difference here is long breaks. There's no Godfrey Larson Day on this calendar. That, that's a cyclical holiday. We won't be on that one. It comes around like Halley's Comet, so it will be a little time on that one. But this option has long breaks. Now, I'm going to quickly flip between the long and the short break option and ask the Board to notice, the start dates of these two calendars are exactly the same. Teachers and students come back on the first, the same day. What we tried to do was have some consistency between these, so that if you're a patron or an employee looking at the options, you can say, "If I have long breaks, that means X. If I have short breaks, that means Y." So the short break option, any takers, any takers, any takers?
No, I can, sorry, unless you want to. So for the short break option, I mean, that's exactly what it is. Fall break would only be three days, with one of those being the grade transmittal day, and April, or sorry, spring break would be in March. That's still a full week. And if you look at Christmas break, we come back on the second, so we have a two-day week in January. With only, I think this one, let's see, is that? I don't remember. Sorry, I should have refreshed my memory a little bit before we came. But the quarter two ends only six days after we get back from, from Christmas, whereas on the long break option, we have a full two weeks. So that's, that's another big, like, for teachers, that's probably a bigger deal than students trying to make up that last-minute grades and things like that.
Caleb, is, is the winter recess the same for both?
On the long break option, it's two full weeks, 10 school days. The short break option, it is eight with a two-day week coming back. So again, the, like we mentioned, with building codes, you can go above that. There's a trade-off. You can have shorter breaks and end the school year earlier, but there's a trade-off. We have to make up those days somewhere, and it's on the short break option, it comes mainly in fall recess, and at winter recess, with those being a little bit shorter. Now, just as a point of information, I, I looked up the last calendar we had that had the same pattern, the same dates, as, as 2025. That was, I believe, in 2014, and in that calendar, we ended on June 6th, but we didn't have long breaks. So we started a little later that year, had shorter breaks, and we still got out June 6th. June 6th is not that unusual an end date. It is a little later than we have done in the past, or in recent years, though.
So is there a reason why you put that week on the end of the calendar instead of starting a week earlier, like many districts do in Utah?
Starting a week earlier would have teachers back on August 6th, which is a little early for some of the individuals that was the, on the committee that was expressed, that the 6th is a little bit early to come back. And a comment that has come up from time to time is that, you know, a later August start time is, is preferable. We've started earlier in August the past few years than we have for a number of years in Jordan School District, but this is, around the 20th is similar to where we've, we've traditionally started the school year.
But the trade-off to come two weeks after Memorial was worth it for them?
It's only, it's only one week.
It's one extra week.
It's the rest that week and then the next week, right?
And on the, on the long break option, it's the rest of the week of Memorial Day.
Because of my experience, that's a hard week to teach. They get to Memorial and they just shut down.
And some of that comes into the-
Well, so you get that extra week of the shutdown.
Some of that comes into the work that the committee does as we come up with options. I believe we came up with an option that, that might have worked well, but it had the last day of school on a Tuesday, which means we'd have a full week, and then come back for Monday, and then a half-day. That doesn't really work terribly well, so then we shuffle some dates around and, and see how we can make it, make it work, because one of the lessons that I've learned a lot, I thought doing the calendar would just be coloring in boxes, and it is, and I love that part, don't get me wrong, but part of the Calendar Committee's job is to make sure that every stakeholder in the district has, has their voice heard. Not just teachers and parents, but ESPs, to make sure that our, all of our employees, all of them are represented. You know, if, if the Calendar Committee were to say, "Oh, we're just going to do virtual school for a week", that's somewhere, and Mr. Larson can correct me, about a million dollars a day in salary that we'd have to make up? He's giving me the thumbs up because I'm exactly correct. No.
I think it's 1.3.
You know, we, we can't do that to employees and just say, "Well, you're not getting paid for a week because we, we're doing virtual school." We, we make sure, and, and that's one of the things that I love about our, our ESP members is they make sure their voices are heard as well, that, that the people they represent have input into the, the Calendar Committee.
Why start school on a Tuesday instead of a Monday?
Because when you have to have 43 days on a quarter, and some of them, it's just where it fell. We could have done school starting on a Monday, but then you have to pick one other day somewhere in the year to drop. We could have done a Godfrey Larson Day, but wanted to wait and see what the response was to this year.
But you can't, probably because of how the semesters lie. I'm just thinking, and then on the other end, why get out on a Friday? Why not have the last day be on Thursday, which is the same day as graduation?
It's all about the quarters.
It's the length of the quarter, because the last day is-
You can't take it off the end and add it to the front because of the quarter semester break. You just have to do 90 days and 90 days.
Or as close to that as we can. Sometimes we end up with a really great calendar that has a 41-day quarter, and so you have to start all over. Or a really great calendar with really great breaks that has 116 days of school. And so we have to go back and start all over again.
And then on spring break, when is Easter? Is one of the options, like, why is one March and one April?
Easter is April 20th, so neither of them are connected to April. That was one of the changes to D207 a few years ago was, it used to include Good Friday, and as a requirement for spring recess, it is not anymore. But that is why-
Why one's March and one's April?
Again, just where the, the quarter end fell.
That, and we had a request to have the break in March rather than April. A lot of people this year said it seemed like it was really early, and it was still winter.
This year doesn't count.
For the past couple of years, we've attached spring recess to the end of third quarter, so that's what it does on both of these two options. But Art Erickson, our high school administrator on the committee, we talked about separating them and having a week or two, a fourth quarter before spring break, and he said, "If you get to about April 7th or April 14th, there's too much going on at the high school. There's activities, there's sports, there's things that, it just makes it tough." And then we start to run into AP testing and things like that.
Have your concerts and, yeah, I agree.
Is that why we didn't get the eclipse day? Just had to bring that up. Okay, so let me ask. One person does. I'm, I'm pulling my kids out of school. So let me ask why the other Volkswagen was not created, because, again, I had, I have, go to lunch every, every week with people from Harriman in my community, and we were even talking today about, "Why can't we start after Labor Day and end before Memorial Day?"
Can I please take this?
So Shree says she gets that once a week. I get that like a ton, maybe, maybe 100 a week. It's just so often. And so like, I, I kind of was played with the short calendar, 13 days. We've got to figure out that's getting rid of fall break, spring break, and all the grade transmittals, and probably Thanksgiving. But we've never asked the community if that's what they really want. And it would be nice as a board member to point back and say, "In 2023, this was on the survey, and nobody wanted it." Like, so that, that's just the desire of me to actually ask, just so I have proof that nobody would want it. But, go for it.
So, like I said, it was my first year on the committee, and this document that Caleb provided us was actually really, really helpful because you do just look at all the colors, and they just look at pretty colors, and I'm just going to put one here, 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 here. But there's actually so many restrictions in creating the calendar, which I think is actually a good thing because it's standardized from year to year. There's really no surprises from year to year about what that calendar is going to look like and what it's going to include. But if somebody were to ask me a question about why not this or why not that, giving them this and giving them a blank calendar and saying, "Give it a try", I think would probably be a good response.
But when we created this calendar policy, we were very specific that we did not want these policies to be the handcuffs that keep us from making great decisions. And so where those are district policies, those are preferences. Like, for instance, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving really is just a preference. We can go to school on that day. I'm not saying we should. I'm not saying, but, so all I'm asking for is, is there a possibility of creating an extra Volkswagen just to see if it's an Etzel instead of a Volkswagen? Which I think it is, but Shree, I know you worked on this because you talked.
I've, I've worked on this because I have had so many people ask me. And I've got one, where we start on September 3rd, we end on May 30th. We have zero breaks. We can't do grade transmittal days. There's no breaks for spring or fall. For Christmas, we are out, I did the 23rd through the 1st, so we, it's a very short break, just kind of like our short break one. We have to go to school all three days in November, and we are still short one day. So we literally cannot do that calendar.
Well, grade transmittal days, though, we could go to school on those.
I, I mean, if we change policy, we can go to school on grade transmittal days. But I know, just being on the Calendar Committee as long as I have, a lot of teachers actually do use those days for grade transmittal and to catch up on different things. This gives teachers no breaks. Different things. This gives teachers no breaks during the year and as a parent, I don't want my. Kids to go to school with a teacher that's had no breaks.
Well, I don't I don't either and I don't think the community does either, but I'm just really big at just maybe just saying. Let's throw that in there just to see then I have data I can go back to the community when they ask this a hundred times a week.
Well, and we have, remember the survey that we did five years ago.
Did that? Did we have one on? Uh, started on Memorial and ended on?
Well, we didn't have that, but it this was the this was the big, big one when Travis was still in charge and.
And we went to the long.
We went to longer breaks, longer everything because overwhelmingly people needed like their number one thing was two weeks off for Christmas. And then it was one week off for spring break and then their next preference was one week off of fall break. People love breaks. They just we we had to really explain to them the give and take.
And and I do and everyone I talk to loves the long breaks and especially that fall break, they've really have said great things. But again, I'm just for those people that ask, it would be really nice to. I could publish my own calendar or Shree's or something, but. But I just, it would be nice for me to point to the survey and say. Yeah, you were the only one that wanted that cuz that happens a lot. They're very loud and voiceless, but when you actually do the survey, like they're the only person.
I mean, if we could have a hundred and sixty days of school year, I can do anything.
Yeah.
So.
Anyway.
Question though, it it sounds like that's not even possible under our current policy, though. So in order for us to put that calendar out to the public, we'd need to change our policy first.
We we could put PD days.
We could start it earlier. Oh, no, we couldn't. You can take you could you could go to Christmas and then the day after Christmas they can come in.
I mean, if anybody wants to come back in between, we could do that. We could come back on the twenty third.
I don't know.
Board members, is anyone else interested in having a Memorial Day to Labor Day or sorry, Labor Day to Memorial Day calendar included in our options?
I am not interested in that. I think um I see the logistics why it just cannot work.
And I agree. When I think about what we used to have to put on the calendar, we had to have a day in March. That nobody was in the schools and we and the buses had to be right where they were so that they could be um. Repaired and cleaned and so we had to have a day in March that we had to plan in for the buses. Yeah. So yeah, you've done a good job. I'm not interested in that other option.
If I could bring up the survey, I appreciate Mr. Robinson mentioning the survey. Um, we have intended to do a another preference survey several times, but COVID and COVID and COVID and things and. So what we're going to do this year is when we, if the board authorizes us to move to survey, we'll have the survey that shows these options. Um, just as a point to avoid skewing the data at all, they will present be presented randomly to patrons so that neither one is first or second. They will just appear, but after they express their preference, then they'll have a series of preference questions just in general that we can use. Next year, so our intent moving forward is that we do those preference surveys every year with the calendar survey, so we can always operate off of. The most recent set of, well, last year, here's what you said you wanted and that's what we build for a calendar. That's that's in the survey that we have ready to go if the board chooses to proceed tonight. We should have the symphony every time. This is wonderful.
At my LEAC meeting last week, the table that I was at, there was eleven teachers and one of them said, why can't we? Get out by Memorial Day and start after Labor Day. And I says, well, we can, there just wouldn't be any breaks during the year and the whole table just. You know, resounding like, no, 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 we need breaks, like, don't even, don't even go there.
I've heard someone say anytime you're initial, your first thought is why can't we just, there's probably a good reason.
And it's been thoroughly vetted, believe me.
There was some discussion when I I'll say the second time in the so it won't invoke the rule. But the when we moved off of year round calendars. There was this desire to look at having some longer breaks, not exactly like year round, but still that same sort of feel. That when we're off, we're really off for a week or we're off for two weeks. Um, so that we start a little earlier and a little later, but we have some breaks along the way. And uh, you know. Burnout for employees and students and parents is a is a real thing and having these breaks along the way. Are uh, I I think it's useful. From the feedback that I've that I've received, it's it's. It's been nice to be able to say, yes, but we do have. This mid mid spring break and we do have these professional days and we do have some other things to break it up. And I've asked over the years in negotiations with JEA. Do you want, you know, those are those are days at the end of the quarter that are compensated, but. You're not required to be in the building or those days that you would be interested in having as instructional days and. The feedback from teachers has been, we just really need that pause at the end of the quarter to catch up. To give time to, you know, get the paperwork in place, which I totally agree with and understand. I just wanted. To to say that we have asked the question over the years just to check that for many years and. Um, the feedback from teachers has always been, yeah, we need that time to close the quarter down, so.
Always wondered too about the science behind like the summer slide too. I don't know how that works. But in my mind, I feel like my kids aren't as bored with a little bit shorter summer break. And you're still able to fit stuff in, but hopefully they're still retaining a lot of what they've. Learned. I don't know. I don't know any of the. Thing behind it, yeah, but.
Okay, so is everyone comfortable moving forward with these two calendars going out to survey with them?
Just two? I have one more question. Um.
Yeah, just so.
It's not about the third calendar. I have one more question.
Everyone's okay with two calendars? No one wants a third one added? Okay, okay, next, your question then.
The um, the emergency closure day.
Yes.
That's our policy?
It is in policy and I believe in board rule that we have to have one designated.
In board rule too? Okay.
We we usually just do a virtual day, but in board rule, there are. There are some, there's some flexibility that we get by scheduling one, even if it's not used. So I believe the intent from USBE is just, we want to see that you have one scheduled. Because if we didn't have one scheduled and we went to them and said, we had this emergency, we had to close schools, we don't know what to do, they'd say, when's your makeup day? Well, we don't have one and I think their answer would be, great, come in on a Saturday and make it work.
It might be something good for them to look at if they need it anymore, but.
I mean, really, all it impacts for us is it's a line of text on on the calendar. I think. The cabinet and superintendent and our teachers by far and away are prepared to do virtual. I think we did it eighteen times this this school year so far, nineteen?
So far.
It feels like it. Yeah, there will be no more snow.
It's gonna be a snow day next week.
I was just wondering, I mean, cuz I mean, it's just been the last year or two that that's kind of evolved and so does that need to be looked at? And I think that's what I'm asking is.
We just mark it as as the day so that we're we're in compliance if necessary, but where we convert the days to virtual. We we don't, we haven't had a need for it for several years.
Caleb, did you go through every single board rule to know which ones talked about scheduling and calendars?
Thankfully, they're all mostly in uh two, seven, seven, four, nineteen, so we've not looked through all of them.
Can I ask a quick question? On the long break option, I think, is it maybe a typo that the great transmittal day is written as the thirteenth, but it looks like it's colored in? A different day? Or am I just reading it poorly?
Um, I do have a couple typos there. I will make sure those are corrected.
I was just like, am I am I misunderstanding or is it just something simple? So thank you.
And that's why we have a committee because dozens of people look at these and there are still things that slip through. One of my greatest fears being having responsibility for the the calendar, I don't know if you'll remember, one of our. Northern Utah districts had to come in, I believe, on New Year's Day because they miscounted the number of days on their calendar and had to make up a day. I live in fear of that, even though I know I counted with Godfrey and Larson Day, I. Wanted to count again today to make sure we were fine because it is a constant terror.
And I'm glad that Caleb lives in fear, so we don't have to. I I do want to mention Caleb is always doing uh. A great job of making sure that the calendars are accessible, that they're easy to read. You can. You can click on one and subscribe to it in Google Calendar. And he also uh put forward the um, do we have school today calendar? That strips away all of the explanations and all of the colors and if the day is blue, we do not have school. If it's white, we do have school and that has been accessed frequently this year. So he's always innovating and I always appreciate when I meet someone and they say, oh, yes, I'm on the calendar committee. They're a singular type of individual when they dedicate their time to helping us with the calendar. Uh, because as you can see, they enjoy it, but it does take a lot of time. And so I appreciate the employees and parents who dedicate that time and field the questions week after week about why we can't do X or Y. Uh, I I I really appreciate that. I would not want that to be one person, whoever that person is. Uh, doing the calendar and I appreciate the process that they all go through and and dedicate time to, so thank you.
I'm sorry, you can tell which one I'm leaning towards because I'm reading it really carefully. So sometimes when we have a week where you have a Monday off and then a Friday off. People ask me, why did you guys do that? So I see that in February, so can you just answer that so I have one ready? Why did you do that?
Parent teacher conference and holidays.
But is elementary parent teacher conference needs to be right here or do we have a little flexibility with that?
That one, I believe if you refer back to this document, would be under the preference column. Um, we can schedule it whenever we want. That has typically been when we have scheduled it. Um, I know the secondary schools prefer having their conferences and then going into a comp day and Washington and Lincoln Day. My feeling is the elementaries probably prefer a little bit of a shorter week as well because. They have, even though they have fewer students, they have a lot more content to cover in a parent conference, so. It's to provide a a shorter week to both groups through that scheduling.
But it wouldn't make sense to say, like, just move the elementary conference back a week.
We we absolutely could.
Does anybody else get that question? Just me. I know Jackie does because I hear it all the time in my neighborhood.
We've talked about moving it back, but when it overlaps, then teachers can't go. To their child's conferences or families. It it just kind of makes it more difficult if you have.
Want to align them, but.
You're meaning moving it.
I'll move them both back a week, in other words.
Or move elementary to the.
Move elementary so that there's a week between them just because. It's a weird week when your kid only goes to school for three days and those days off are not together. It's like. I go to school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday this week. That's weird.
You mean move it to the next week.
I love two short weeks.
So that it's two four day weeks instead of one three day week.
Absolutely could be done. There's nothing preventing that.
If I'm the only one who's hearing that or concerned by it, then there's no need.
I've been the only one before.
Putting it out. Yeah, but we don't listen then. I'm just kidding. I always listen to you.
Do we have a lot of people that check out on the fourteenth of February, though, because since that secondary parent teacher conference comp day? Well, I have elementary kids too. I'll just pull them out. Do we, is attendance pretty low on that day?
The the years that I was most thorough in tracking daily attendance were our COVID years and I did not notice that in particular those years.
Might be hard to find that that one out.
It it is a little trickier because of some of the quirks of attendance.
But that might be something to to track in future years.
We absolutely could. Um, to answer your question, Ms. George, if if that were a change we wanted to do, I. Don't know that I would pursue that without first getting some significant elementary feedback because. That is kind of a a big shift and we'd like to not move anyone's cheese without checking first.
Such anyone's cheese, I seem to stand alone in that question.
And Nikki, just so you know, I did ask about moving the actual comp day to the Tuesday, so having Monday, Tuesday off. Parent teacher conferences, Wednesday, Thursday, but it seemed like no parent, no teachers wanted to come back. Right after those conferences, like the day before didn't, it wasn't as helpful as the day after.
Um, I have a question. Um, does the calendar committee um look at? Proposed calendars for other school districts, neighboring school districts, like to see if parent teacher conferences overlap or? Anything like that?
I did give the calendar committee copies of calendars for other districts, but. It is not the highest on our priority list to work around those. Some other districts also aren't as specific as we are in those types of things.
And I know something that came up was that some of the schools don't do the driver's ed, so that requirement for those days. Changed as well.
Other districts are different, so we do, we do try to see what other districts are doing well that we could. Adapt from, but there are, it it would be almost impossible to to.
So what is motivating this question is just with um this past year for parent teacher conferences for elementary schools. There were parent teacher conferences in um several other districts and so. Schools that wanted to do a book fair and I know that that is not the top priority, but it was hard to get. That scholastic on the same day, if that makes any sense, just because so many of, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I helped with that. Oh, I mean, I not as much, but I helped the one in the library that was trying to do and schedule the.
I had schools talk to me about it too.
So I have a graduation question that I get every year, well, actually two of them. Uh, why is it the day before the last day of school? And then the other one is is teachers, like elementary and secondary teachers that want to go to graduation but can't because it's. The day before the last day of school.
I'm gonna turn that to high school admin, no, I'm sorry. That is a great question. Why it is on that, the reason that makes sense in my mind, which who knows if it's correct, is. That. If we had it on the last day of school. We run into the possibility of of not having staff as available for some of the associated activities, so. Having the school year finish all the way by the last day keeps contracts a little more. Consolidated. I don't know if that makes sense, but I know there are a myriad of activities that go on with graduation.
Mr. Hamblin has an answer too.
Yeah, there's also venue availability, which is a major problem on a Friday. Um, so we in scheduling that, we ran into those issues in the past that it was a venue availability issue that that was guiding a lot of that.
President Miller, as for your question about uh employees attending graduations and so forth. Uh, we did send a memo out last month to all of our administrators encouraging flexibility uh to provide parents and grandparents requesting attendance at their. Their children's graduation or commencement ceremonies to be flexible with them and work with them as much as possible, so.
I just conferred with uh Ms. Goff and Mr. Swanson and they have assured me I'm a hundred percent correct in every way, so I appreciate that.
On every point you made today.
Yes.
Right, when can we um expect to see the survey come out?
So that's a great question. We'll bring results of the survey to the May business meeting because approving the calendar is a business item. So the survey will be sometime between now and the business meeting. We try to provide two weekends for parents to respond. We can start it as soon as this week or we can push it a little bit so it it ends closer to the the beginning of the. Or the business meeting where we'll be approving it. There's no real, no real preference. It will be between now and the May business meeting, though.
Don't we bring it back to study session?
We bring it to the study session before the business meeting, but. The the calendars are approved in business meeting and we usually come to that study session before to just give you the overview of the survey.
There's not time to get it back by our next study session, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
We could, if if you wanted that study session, we absolutely could. It would then be at the third, another board meeting for an approval item. So it it's just a question of how many times you want to have to sit through me presenting to you.
The more the merrier.
If the board would like the survey by study session of May, we can certainly do that. There's time to do that.
Board members, do you have a preference on that?
Don't foresee this calendar being highly debated, so I don't think it's as important that we have multiple opportunities to speak. So I'm okay with planning.
I agree with Ms. George.
I never like making decisions on the day I'm going to approve it. So I'd prefer to have it next meeting so that we kind of know what we're gonna do and then. People know what we're gonna do and if they wanna. Voice, they have two more weeks to voice. That's my preference on everything, but.
Anyone else have a preference? I I think that's best.
I, I think that's best practice to have it at the May one, but I also don't anticipate.
I, I wasn't a board member, but I remember last year that the board went with the calendar that had the majority of votes. So.
Cause I was the only one that voted for the other one.
Well, I mean, it, it seemed like the board voted for the one that the most patrons wanted.
And in the survey, after viewing both of the app, options, the next question says, would you prefer the calendar option with long breaks or the calendar option with short breaks? So rather than ranking or stars where we've had some conflicting results, we're just asking which of these two do you like better?
Very straightforward. I love it.
You also asked them if they're an employee and, okay.
The survey that you have seen in previous years is exactly the same, other than we change out the details. And this year we've added the preference section to the end. And yeah, it, the two options are presented randomly and the preference question asking which one they prefer is also presented randomly because we want to make sure we're not steering any votes anyway inadvertently or otherwise.
Okay. So the majority is okay with May 23rd? Did you have something else?
I was just curious how many, how many survey results we typically get?
The calendar survey is probably the, the biggest survey we do as a district. Um, I believe last year within the first hour, we had almost a thousand responses. Uh, the biggest we've had is pushing eight thousand responses. We're, we're usually in the five to eight thousand range in, in responses. And we do have two open-ended questions, one for comments on these options and one for comments in general, and we provide those to the board in addition to the, the breakdown of the other survey questions. So you can look forward to that.
Okay. So everyone's okay with May 23rd? Except for Mr. Robinson. All right. We'll move forward then. Thank you. Thank you for being here, calendar committee. We appreciate all of your work on this. Our next agenda item is to review our updates to board policy E404, safety and security. This is a policy we've been working on for a couple of months and has been brought before us several times. This is also on the agenda to be voted on. And we just wanted to bring it to study session one more time in case anybody had any questions. And so you had a chance to look over, um, the tweaks that were made last time. So Ms. George.
You said it so well. So this is not any new information. This is what we discussed and settled on in our last conversation. Um, just wanted to make sure that everybody's ready to vote. Any questions that have popped up?
I like the change on, um, C from will to May.
I think that particular change was Dr. Godfrey. So thank you for that. We, uh, we had three phrasing options and went with his, of course.
Can you remind me that what, what we meant by the last sentence there? The board will report annually to the community on the physical and mental safety of students. How, how is that going to happen?
We discussed that, I think, last time as my report to the board about
End of the year.
The ends policy at the end of the year.
So, so your report will satisfy that requirement?
It's at the request of the board that I'm making that presentation.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. You're still, this will be on the agenda and you're welcome to ask more questions at that time too, or if we need to. So.
Huge thank you to those who have worked tirelessly, making sure that words are correct and formatting is correct. Thank you to Roxanne.
I appreciate the updates. I think it gives us good direction.
Yeah. Nice work. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to our next agenda item because there's some people here for it. Um, if we, we do have a hard stop, we need to be out at Jordan Youth Symphony at six, 10. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, so we'll spend 10 minutes on overnight travel. If we need to discuss it more after our business meeting, we can, but let's, let's hear the information that you have. So welcome Mr. Brad Sorenson to the table and Mr. Cornberg from Harriman High School and a few other guests. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Um, we are, as you know, excited to, uh, present a potential exception and in policy AA 414. Um, as, as has been added to your board docs, uh, there is an opportunity that exists for the, the band and choir programs at Harriman High School in policy AA 414. Uh, as a general rule, we do not travel outside the continental United States. Uh, but if an exception or something were to come up, then we can bring that to the board for consideration. Uh, and so, so that is why we're here. Um, I'm going to let Mr. Cornberg maybe, uh, introduce the individuals with us as well as kind of express a little bit about the opportunity that's been presented for that chance to, to travel.
Great to be here. I do want to introduce the, the staff team here tonight. So Raymond Hernandez is from, he's my band instructor. Uh, Andrew Houghton is my choir instructor at Harriman High School. Lovely Jessica Tidwell booster. She's waving at us. Um, is a somewhat involved booster. No, she's crazy involved.
She's way involved. Jordan air.
Michelle Nilson is, uh, she's staff to help our performing arts. And, uh, really you would think that we'd go out and pursue this opportunity to go to Hawaii, right? I mean, who wouldn't do that? But it really caught us by surprise. There is a, a veterans' performance in Hawaii. They, we were invited, um, unbeknownst to us, uh, they were looking at quality of bands from each state. Uh, Harriman High School has the largest band in, uh, our district and we compete uh, very well with the larger bands. So that was one of the criteria. They also looked at academic performance and unbeknownst to us, they also looked at behavior and recommendation of other band, uh, directors and judges, uh, that come to our state. So we were given an invitation this, gosh, how long ago, Raymond?
Uh, back in March.
Back in March. And we thought, I don't know if, if we can pull this off, but we're certainly here. It's a great opportunity to go not only to, to represent the state of Utah, but also the experience at the, uh, the memorial on Veterans Day would be a phenomenal, uh, experience. Um, lots of fundraiser opportunities for, for students and it's not this next year. It would be for the following year. So we have plenty of time if the board approves to, uh, raise enough money and, and, and make, make this experience possible. Uh, I should mention, we don't miss any if, uh, certainly a big, it's on you. Uh, we would not miss any days of school because it would be over spring break. If that, that helps.
Uh, Mr. Cornberg, this does say 2024.
So it's the 20, it's not.
Not this coming fall, but the next spring. Yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
But it's in the next school year.
They send out the invitations a year in advance. Yeah.
And we were one of 10 bands actually across the country that was selected. So, uh, out of, they, um, actually initially said they were going to select one out of, one band out of all of 50 states. But ultimately decided to do one out of, we were one of 10 for the, across the country. Same thing with the choir. Um, so to have two of our programs represent, you know, 20 programs in the whole country is a pretty, pretty big deal for us, which is awesome.
Do you have another tour other than this or is this it?
This is it. So if we were to approve this trip, uh, this would be a marching band and choir tour. And we would not take another trip for our concert bands.
How does the cost compare to similar trips that you have done? Like, are we asking a pretty big strain on families here?
Uh, so just as an example, the one that's come closest to it would be our trips. Like we've taken a couple of trips to New York. We did last year and then did the year before COVID. Um, it's been Harriman's tradition to kind of go every three years. Um, and those two trips, uh, ended up being around 14 to 1500. So kind of the max for our district, the 1500 cap. So this is going a bit beyond it, but that's one reason that they gave us the invitation a year in advance. And if it was approved, we would, um, we've been brainstorming ideas and things that would help, uh, students start now and is to relieve that from the family. And we've also had, um, people talking to us about, um, company sponsorships. Um, and maybe you could talk about the one from.
Actually, yeah, the, the, uh, Utah National Guard is in sponsorship of this. And there's possible funding coming from the Utah National Guard and some other businesses that we're in contact with. I don't think we were solicited by the Utah National Guard. They came to us in support of this.
Yeah. And we have about, uh, 10 more fundraisers planned from here until the next year. So we have two currently going right now, actually, just in general for marching band.
Okay. Question, how will you guarantee that the money that you're raising will go for students who are actually in the program at the time?
That's a great question, uh, because it's, it's a year away. I think that's part of letting people know upfront, even now that this trip is that far away. So the parents know, yeah, I mean, if you've got a senior, you're, you're probably not going to go, right? So I think it's important that the timeliness, letting them know when the trip is, is going to go to target those parents and students who want to go on this trip, that they could spend the time in the fundraiser. That was part of our decision. That, that's kind of part of the immediacy of this. And then the, uh, company, if we go, uh, would like to start helping us make arrangements as well. That's the other timeliness issue coming forward.
And part of it is like the two fundraisers that he mentioned, um, are specifically right now just for the marching band students because they had their marching band kickoff, the students signed up because marching band starts summer.
In June, yeah.
Yeah. So like all those students have already started and, and those fundraiser fees will not, can go towards this trip, but one reason that they're doing it is they can go towards their marching band fees just in general. So the choir actually hasn't started doing any fundraisers yet until we got approval because I didn't want to, we, we've just, I finished the lists for the choirs for next year. So I know what students are going to be in there, but I didn't present this to them until we knew for sure. Cause we don't really have reason to start fundraising yet. If we don't get approved, then we don't want those funds.
Mr. Sorenson, remind me of our maximum aggregate amount for each student.
Uh, my goodness, what is it for overnight? It's $7,500, I believe is the maximum aggregate for, for, uh, one individual and the fees, but I can look that up really quick while we're talking.
Well, he's looking at that. Do you have a pulse on what the parents are feeling about this?
They want to go.
And actually, I'm going to be honest with you. It seems like it's going to help in recruiting as well. And we've got a lot of younger kids that are looking at this, which is exciting for us.
Hear all that?
Yeah, we heard you.
Yeah, we have our, our band booster here, but I also talked to, um, several of the choir parents that have kids are currently in my program this year and have kids coming back next year. And they are, we're all in favor of it as well. We haven't had anyone tell us they don't think it's a good opportunity.
And especially from the marching band side, the marching band's actually never taken a tour before. Uh, they just do their state competition down in St. George. So for a lot of our parents, uh, this is kind of a big deal for them because this is the first time their kids will get to go on a tour, uh, cause they just did marching band or stuff like that.
This is just curiosity speaking, but I'm picturing the giant trailers that I've seen in your parking lot. How do you get that on an airplane to Hawaii?
So, uh, actually, so we did reach out to a tour company to kind of start figuring out some of those prices. Um, so the, the good news is that the tour company will help us get everything on a plane there. Everything should fit under a plane. Um, and then once we get there, the tour company has already arranged, uh, both tour buses and they'll provide us a box truck to move all that equipment around. So logistically, there is quite a bit.
Maybe the Air National Guard would give you a cargo plane.
That would be great. And honestly, when they talk about the tour company, we're talking about the company that has invited us to come to assist us with that.
They have made all the arrangements because they, they realize it's a big endeavor. So they try to make it as easy as possible for us.
Yeah, a lot of kids and equipment to move.
That total aggregate is $7,000. As you have seen on this, they're looking at about 25, $2,600.
That's 26, I think.
2,600.
Yeah, 2,600.
For this, for this particular trip.
So that's something we'd need to know too. Um, of course it's going to vary for each student and what they're involved in at school.
And it's a year away. It may be off.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think the sooner they know, the easier, right? Cause then for flights, it's easier to book those out in advance. Um, and actually I think 2,600 is estimated high. I've been talking with the tour company and they're estimating we could, depending on the number of students, but they could probably get the cost lower than that. Obviously we'll keep it at 26 because the district has its insurance policies. Um, but 26 is a high estimate.
Does that include meals and everything for the students?
That would include everything for the five days.
Meals, transport, uh, while we're there, everything, tickets to the memorial, all that stuff.
Surfboards.
Yes.
Ports, yes.
Spray tan lotion.
Boogie boards, not surfboards, boogie boards.
And which administrator will be accompanying them?
Well.
And which, I'll tell you.
I'm great for this.
The ride. The, the fight in a administrative meeting is, is ugly. That's all I'm telling.
I'm sure.
Which board member?
Just curious if you're accepting applications for chaperones?
Yes, actually.
I'm good. I'm good to improve it.
Our band is probably 120 students. So I mean, lots of chaperones necessary for sure. We've got a big band.
I think you'll be okay finding them from your own community, but if you have a problem.
I'm good to approve this.
President Miller, I move that we approve this exception.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Dunford, seconded by Mr. Robinson to approve the exception to overnight travel for Harriman High School. To allow them to travel outside the continental United States. Any discussion to that motion?
My only, my only hesitation, and it's not a hesitation because I'll vote for this. But it's, um, pending the outcome of fundraising and the stability of everything. You know, I think that's really important. And then also to check into the aggregate, um, funding for each student. That's really important too. I don't want to go over that. Okay. But I would vote for it. Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Congratulations on the invitation.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's this board or not, but one of the best investments, um, we've seen providing the middle schools with additional instruments and so forth. Feeder program has been huge. So I don't know who, but that feeder system and then thank you because the middle schools getting that equipment has been very helpful in preparation. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Uh, I just want to recognize Representative Pulsofer here too, hiding over there in the corner, but thank you and welcome for being at our study session today. We are going to take a break. We need to be out there in five minutes. We're going to hear Jordan Youth Symphony perform for 15 minutes before we start our business meeting.
Can we leave our things in here and have it locked up?
Please say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up, down. Up, down. Up, down. Free stand. Ho. Up, down. Ho. Go, go. Turn. Back to the. Ho. Forward. Ho. Down, down. Quick.
Thank you to our West Jordan Civil Air Patrol Color Guard. Well done, and so great to have you here. We would like to welcome everyone to our Jordan School District Board of Education meeting. It is Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are at our J A T C South Building. And I'm joined today, starting at this end, by our Board Attorney, Mr. Van Coman. And then Board members, Mr. Bryce Dunford, Ms. Lisa Dean, Ms. Marilyn Richards, Ms. Nikki George. I'm Tracy Miller, Mr. Daryl Robinson, Mr. Brian Barnett. And then our Superintendent, Dr. Anthony Godfrey, our Associate Superintendent, Dr. Mike Anderson, and our Business Administrator, Mr. John Larson. And thank you, all of those who are here with us today. We appreciate having you join us for our board meeting. We first want to start out by giving a big thanks to the Jordan Youth Symphony. They just played for us out here in the atrium before the meeting began, and it was fantastic. Can we give them a round of applause? The Jordan Youth Symphony is a symphony made up of middle schoolers. It's an audition group that middle schoolers from across our district can audition for. They meet after school once a week. And their directors are Eric Perkins, Keith Davis, and Jennifer Clark. And they really do a phenomenal job. It's a great experience for our students and fun to be able to hear them today. And we want to thank our, the West Jordan Civil Air Patrol Color Guard, as I mentioned earlier, for being here. Some of those students are also from West Jordan Middle School who is joining us. And we're grateful to have West Jordan Middle School in the house. And Parker Quinney was also the one that did our Pledge of Allegiance. And he is a Student Council Representative at West Jordan Middle School. So now we are going to have "Our Reverence" by Sinny McIntyre. And then we will have "Celebrating Schools" by West Jordan Middle School Student Body Officers. We have Katie Tang, Grace Hall, Chandler Newman, Vina No, Anna Ko, and Scott Mousley. Uh, so Sinny.
Hi, my name is Chinny McIntyre, and I'm the eighth grade co-chair at West Jordan Middle School. Mahatma Gandhi once said, "Our ability to reach unity in diversity will be the beauty and test of our civilization." When we overcome and embrace each other's unique qualities, we unite as one and learn how to work together no matter our differences. Our school aspires to bring our diverse cultures together so we can learn more about them and appreciate them. How well we unite in our diverse community will test us. It is the beauty and test of how we, as a school and community, can work together to do great things. Through everyone's daily life, we work with all different kinds of people. The test is how you unite with them and work together as a team. This isn't always easy to do, but in our school community, we strive to achieve unity and embrace one another's differences. Thank you.
Good evening, Jordan School District Board members, student Superintendent Godfrey, and other district administrators. My name is Katie Tang, and I am the West Jordan Middle Ninth Grade Student Body Officer Chair. I have the wonderful privilege and opportunity to share with you the Jordan School District Board and the Jordan School District community how amazing West Jordan Middle School is. West Jordan Middle has supportive, engaging, and driven faculty, staff, students, and administrators. Our community is incredibly supportive and active in our activities. Our community is incredibly supportive and active in our activities, programs, and learning. This year, our school motto is "You Matter and You Belong." West Jordan Middle does everything in its power to connect with and support each student every day. To genuinely have each student feel that they matter and belong at West Jordan Middle School, our students, faculty, and staff all implement and promote the W J M S Pride Attributes. The Pride acronym stands for everyone at our school being prepared, resilient, inclusive, determined, and empowered. We will have some of our other fantastic Student Body Officers explain more about each of the Pride Attributes and programs at West Jordan Middle.
Hi, Board Members, Superintendent Godfrey, and other District Administrators. I'm Grace Hall, and I'm the West Jordan Middle Ninth Grade School Spirit Leader Student Body Officer. At W J M S, students and faculty are prepared. Being prepared for school and life is crucial for all of our long-term success. It requires having a positive attitude, setting goals, being organized, and learning time management skills. At our school, these are things that our faculty, staff, and students help each other with every day. Being prepared means coming to class with the required materials, completing homework assignments on time, and actively participating in class discussions. These habits not only help students achieve academic success, but also instill responsibility, discipline, and self-motivation that are essential for success in all areas of life. By preparing for school and life, students can cultivate a growth mindset that will help them overcome challenges, set meaningful goals, and achieve their dreams. To help prepare students at our school for high school and life after that, we have many different programs and resources, such as Pride Time, which is our intervention period, Second Step, Stress Management, Growth Mindset, Counseling Support, School Psychologists, Day Use Chromebooks, Supporting and Motivating Teachers, and an Amazing Library. All of these programs and resources help every student at our school stay prepared.
Board Members, Superintendent Godfrey, and other District Administrators. I am Chandler Newman, and I am the Eighth Grade Student Body Officer Chair at West Jordan Middle. The second letter in our Pride Trait stands for resilient. Resilient means staying emotionally, mentally, and academically tough in the hard situations faced in our lives and in our learning journey. W J M S students and faculty are resilient for many different reasons. We love our school mascot, the lion. It represents strength. W J M S lions are always there for each other during tough times. We are also mindful of what our individual needs may be. One of the most important parts of being resilient is maintaining a growth mindset. If you are not amazing at a certain skill, the collaboration of resiliency and having a growth mindset reminds us that we can improve these skills. It's the power of yet. For example, if you aren't doing great in math, a good mindset is to say that you are not good at it yet and need to communicate with our teachers and families to help build our knowledge. The W J M S resilient growth mindset is the knowledge that you can always be better at something. If you get a bad grade on a test, instead of putting yourself down, study hard and retake that test and improve your mastery. W J M S teachers are always there to help students and support our resiliency. Our focus on resiliency is what makes W J M S such an amazing school.
Hello, Board Members, Superintendent Godfrey, and other District Administrators. My name is Vina No, and I'm the Ninth Grade Historian at West Jordan Middle, and I want to talk about the attributes of inclusivity. Inclusivity is such an important aspect of school. It promotes a positive environment for students to learn and grow as a person. That's why West Jordan Middle School prides itself on its inclusivity. One way that we promote this belief is through our diverse Student Leadership Club, such as Latino in Action, Latina Crew, Black Student Alliance, and Polynesian Crew. These various clubs enrich our school through celebrating different cultures and traditions through events and activities. Our school aims to be inclusive through their range of extracurricular activities and clubs that cater to different interests. These programs provide an opportunity for students to feel connected and included. Some programs that our school offers to support the school are Student Ambassadors, Gay Straight Alliance, A S L, and many others. In addition to our supporting teach, in addition, our supporting teachers, counselors, and psychologists emphasize the importance of creating a safe and respectful environment, with the counseling center providing students emotional and mental support by discussing any of their concerns. In addition to our Student Leadership Groups, West Jordan Middle School has an exemplary after-school program with a charitable grant from Ron McBride Foundation. West Jordan Middle provides around fifty different after-school opportunities each week for students. These after, these activities range from receiving enrichment activities to academic homework support. Lastly, West Jordan Middle School ensures that all students have the resources we need, no matter what. We believe that all our students feel safe at our school because of our inclusivity.
Hello, Board Members and District Administrators. I am Anna Ko, and I am the Seventh Grade School Spirit Leader at West Jordan Middle School. At W J M S, we are always determined. Our school implements and encourages determination in every lesson and in every classroom. Our teachers help students gain determination and motivation to achieve their highest potential. Every eighth grade student at West Jordan Middle demonstrates their determination and drive to succeed by participating in We the People program in our U S History classes. Our determination has paid off, as we have won first in the entire state twice in the last five years. Additionally, we have qualified for the state finals every year. West Jordan Middle provides motivating electives in most, in almost all areas that promote the love of learning. We are also proud of our after-school program and our student groups that help reinforce determination for each and every student. Our student groups of the Student Body Officers, National Juniors Honor Society, Black Student Alliance, Gay Straight Alliance, Latino Crew, Polynesian Crew, Latinos in Action, American Sign Language Group, and Student Ambassadors all compose the Student Leadership Groups within our amazing school. We are determined to be inclusive and supportive of each other as well. Our wonderfully diverse students support the determination of each other in all that we do. At West Jordan Middle, we are determined that every day we will try our best and be the best person that we can be. Thank you.
Hello, Board Members and District Administrators. I am Scott Mousley, and I am the Ninth Grade Student Council Representative at West Jordan Middle. At W, at W J M S, students, faculty, and staff are empowered. With empowerment as our final pride attribute, students gain the knowledge, confidence, means, or ability to do things or make decisions for oneself. Our school has many programs and classes that can help empower our students. Some of those that we have are National Junior Honor Society, which is for a select few ninth grade students and helps them get service hours and prepare for National Honor Society in high school. We also have groups and clubs that increase inclusivity and can help empower our students. We have many supports that our students have access to that can empower them. These include Second Step, which we do every week, and each lesson teaches the students how to face some issues that are or will be in their lives. There are methods to manage stress in our school, and there are also supportive and motivating teachers. We have the Lion Learning Lab and Lion Lunch, which helps empower our students by helping them with their homework. We also have many student recognitions, including Lion of the Day, Lion of the Quarter, Freshman of the Week, Honorable Parties, and Notary Parties, which empower our students to have good grades and be on time to class. When our students and faculty are empowered, we can do many things.
As a gesture and art of our appreciation for the support of Jordan School District and the Jordan School District Board, we want to give each of you one of our school pins. Thank you.
Thank you, and we also have something for you. Can I just get everyone that's involved with West Jordan Middle School, students, teachers, parents, administrators, employees, to stand up? Thank you for being here. We, we love hearing about all the great things going on at your school. Thank you so much. And students, you're welcome to stay to our board meeting as long as you want, but if you're anxious to get home and do your homework, we're not offended if you leave. Thank you for being here. Next, we will have our Resolutions of Appreciation, and we'll have Marilyn Richards do that.
Whereas dedicated service to Jordan School District was faithfully and effectively performed, whereas they consistently and conscientiously executed their responsibilities with integrity, honesty, and loyalty, be it therefore, therefore resolved that the Jordan School District Board of Education and District Administration declare appreciation for the outstanding service that was performed in the cause of public education and hereby express our sorrow at the death of these valued friends. Arthal Bob Hunter, a teacher, Calvin Howard Newbold, teacher, principal, and district administrator, and Monte J Willardson, teacher.
Thank you. We are so excited tonight to have our Region P T A here with us to present some, some awards, and I love seeing little kids here on the front row. Brings back many memories of hauling my kids along to P T A meetings. And we so appreciate the P T A and all that they do for our schools. We really couldn't do it without you. So we would like to welcome the Region Director, Sonia Delaney, and then Associate Director Kami Whitchurch, and the Awards Specialist, Anne Howden, to come present awards.
I'm a little bit taller than the last set of speakers. We are really grateful to be here tonight to present you with these outstanding individuals that are both educators in our school district and volunteers. As someone who is a former teacher and currently teaching in the school district, man, it's a tough job, and we are so grateful for all of these educators and these parents who give so much of their time, energy, and brain power to work with our kids and to do all that they can for all the students in our schools in Jordan School District. So we had this year thirty-four individuals nominated for awards at the state level for P T A. They've all been invited. I'm not sure how many have come tonight, but we have a certificate and a small token of appreciation to give to them. So I'd like to read all of their names and have those that are here come up to the front. And then if we can hold our applause until all thirty-four names have been read, I think that will speed things along and, and it can be one loud, a glorious applause. So for Outstanding Administrator, we had Joe Pullen nominated, Curtis Jensen nominated, and Sally Wild nominated for Outstanding Administrator. So if you're here, come on up. All right. For the category of Advocacy Award, we had William Howell. For Outstanding Elementary Educator, we had Gina Noakes, Jason Hassler, Leslie Probert, Rex Prescott. So glad that the kids from West Jordan talked about inclusivity, because we have some nominees for our P T A Inclusivity Award. Casey Blom, Blome, Heather Smith, Heidi Rivera. For Outstanding Secondary Educator, we have Kelly DeHahn, Melinda Van Com, whoops, Melinda Van Coman, Sean Kidd, Tanya Bean. For the Spirit of P T A Award, we have Amy Andrewsen, Hillary Moser, who we know is not here. She's in Europe, lucky duck, Casey Richens, Katie Fuller. Am I confusing you? I'll go Thor. McKenna Christensen. Todd Hogard. For Support Staff in our schools, my Vanna Whites are dropping everything. We have Ann Fritz, Giovanni Perez, Miranda Jelinek, and Miranda Quist. We also have Paul Hanson for Support Staff. For our two thousand and twenty-three Outstanding Volunteer, we have Amy Dimmick, Desiree Van Dyke, Jennifer Christensen, Casey Richens, and Lorraine Holman. So as these wonderful folks are coming up to the front, let's give them all a really wonderful round of applause. Now, stay up here for just a second. I'm switching my hat from Region P T A to State P T A, because now I'm here to represent the Utah State P T A as the award specialist. And of all the award nominees that we were able to submit to the state level, we have six winners from Region Six who won a State P T A award, and I'm going to be really disorganized right here. Just give me one moment. For these individuals, as the representative for the state, we have a pretty rigorous judging process, and we only offer thirty awards at the state level and get hundreds of nominations. And so for the six of you who won at the state level, congratulations. As part of that award, you get a plaque, you get a pin, you get a hundred dollar gift card from Mountain America Credit Union, and you get another certificate, because we need certificates as adults just as much as we do for kids. So, Jason Hassler, won at the state level. Rex Prescott, state level for Outstanding Elementary Educator. Congratulations. Kelly DeHahn. Applause, he's not here. Melinda Van Coman. For Outstanding Secondary Educator. Hillary Moser, she's got a representative. And Katie Fuller. So congratulations to those of you who won at the state, those of you who are recognized at the district level. We cannot run these schools and help these kids without all of your outstanding help and support. And so on behalf of the Region Six PTA, we just want to thank you from bottom of our heart, sounds like a horrible thing to say, but as deeply as we can say thank you, we thank you. And before you leave, we'd like to take a photo and then we're going to have a small reception out in the foyer. So thank you so much.
Okay. Do you want? Do we just hide or go? Okay, we're going to hide for one photo and then board members will go join them for a photo. Find a camera to look at. Almost the end of the school year, smile. Okay. I don't know who handed me their phone. I got three. Should we have the board members?
Yeah, board members, come on in.
I'll text it to you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, PTA. Again, we are so appreciative for everything that PTA does for our schools. And next, we have board member recognitions. Do we have any board members that have any recognitions? Ms. Dean.
So first off, my, this may seem all unrelated, but my fourth graders' field trip to This Is The Place was canceled on April 4th because of this snow day. But I went with her class and all the other fourth graders from Columbia today. And I just wanted to recognize all the teachers and administrators who are willing to put forth an effort to not just have a great academic education for their students, but also provide great experiential education, like This Is The Place. And another thing, I know the PTA just left, but I attended Columbia STEM night last week and this was the first time I've ever participated in the sorting and distributing of the fundraiser chocolate with the PTA. And that is no small feat. And I have benefited for many years from the efforts of the PTA. And so I just wanted to shout out all the PTA members of all the schools throughout the district that make things better for all of the students and families and teachers and administrators. And another thing is, I know West Jordan Middle School left here, but they recently had an art show, their school-wide art show, with three hundred entries, which I think is outstanding. That is a lot of effort on the part of their student body. And last, Kari Sue Hamilton School is a school in our district that serves students that have a lot of challenges with mobility and with verbal skills. And I recently, well, last week, I saw one of their productions of Encanto and just another example of the huge effort of administrators and teachers and other employees to help a population that is frequently on the fringes of so-called normal activities, to help these students participate in a normal activity in a beautiful way. There were several marasols and several bruno's and it was fantastic. So I just wanted to shout out how wonderful it was to see the production at Kari Sue. Gave me a lot of feelings and I just love to see the love of the employees in our district for the students and their willingness to just work really hard to give them the best experiences, the best educational experiences possible.
Thank you. George?
I would just second what a great experience it was to see the innovation at Kari Sue Hamilton. Such creative approaches to making every student have a moment in the spotlight. It was really fun. And I also had an opportunity to visit Oakcrest Elementary's production of Annie and was just blown away at how great it was. I, they could have been on a high school stage. They did such a great job. So congratulations and shout out to them.
Yeah, I agree on Annie. It really was so good, the cute little girl that was Annie. I asked her afterwards, I'm like, how old are you? And she says, eight. I was like, wow. Kids ready for Broadway. Yeah, lots of fun. Anyone else? Okay. Boy, it is musical season and I wish I could see every school's musical. Aside from Kari Sue's and Oakcrest that I was at, I also got to see Oakhurst Middle School's musical and they did camp rock. And boy, that was a lot of fun. They did a great job with that. And just thank you to all of our, all that's involved. The teachers really put in a lot of extra work to pull those productions off. And as do several school employees and lots of parent volunteers too. But it's such a great experience for our kids. I also got to judge minor tank at Bingham High School this year. And if you're not familiar with that, it's like a shark tank program where our students in the entrepreneur class actually develop a business and business plans and then business leaders from the community get to come in and judge. And it was actually really tough this year. We had three winners. But such a great experience for our students to go through that process. And then finally, the high school arts awards were given out this last Monday and got to be on hand for that. And if you want to see a great art display, our high school winners from across the district are still on display through Friday at the Riverton Old Dome Building by the Riverton City Park. Lots of great work there. And finally, on a personal note, the Bingham Ballroom Team Concerts this week, it's going to be fantastic. You're all invited. Okay, superintendent, do you have any recognitions?
Just quickly, a thank you to the orchestra that performed earlier. Lots of people put in a lot of time in this district. Nobody puts more time in than music teachers. It's really exciting to see that performance and see the sense of belonging that students have as a part of that. They learn to be part of a team. They learn to do things they didn't think they could do. And our music programs are invaluable. And our PTA is really important. I appreciate the work they've gone to for these awards today and the awards that they presented previously for students in another board meeting. It takes a lot of effort, as Ms. Dean indicated. Our PTA parents put in tons of time. And as a result of that, we're able to do things that we could not do on our own. And you know, after COVID, we lost some connection to parents because just we had to be separate from each other and we couldn't have people in the building. And we're still recovering from that loss of connection with parents and families. So I appreciate that PTA is there to help us rebuild and strengthen those connections to parents and families because we really are a support to the work that they do in families to help raise children. And as I've mentioned in previous board meetings, as a member of the state PTA Executive Committee, I just get to see firsthand what happens at the state level and what happens at the local level and the tremendous effort that's put in by parents. So we appreciate having PTA as a partner and the many things that they do to help benefit our teachers, our employees, our students, and our parents. So thank you to them as well. And also thank you to the foundation for the great Outstanding Educator banquet. Corey Fairholme and her family hosted at their hotel and it was really a magnificent event. And really heartwarming to see what students are able to achieve and what they're able to overcome. And a great reminder of the incredible educators that we have in our district. So I thank the foundation for making that possible as well.
Thank you. Next is our public comment period. And as a Board of Education, we welcome public input and appreciate this opportunity that we have to hear from our patrons. We have a couple of rules. First of all, we do not take public comment on personnel issues or statements regarding the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual during board meetings. Also, comments must be...
President Miller, we have elected officials...
I'm getting there, yeah. The same rules apply to everybody. Comments must be age appropriate. And the board doesn't discuss items that are not on the meeting's agenda. We do have a couple of items later on that we will take public comment on when we get to those items. So this is for the four things that are not on our agenda today. And just if you're not familiar with the process, since we don't have discussion on things that aren't on our agenda, we generally will follow up with you or bring them to a future agenda item. Okay, everybody that's commenting has three minutes and we'll hear from elected officials first and then patron and then those in-person comments and then we take online comments also. So we do have a couple of elected officials with us here today. I don't know if you both are here to comment, but we appreciate having you here. We have Representative Ken Ivory from the Legislature and we also have Mayor Trent Staggs here, who is the mayor of Riverton City. So thank you, welcome, Representative Ivory.
Thank you very much. We're so grateful for all that you do. And it's certainly a challenging time and a time of great opportunity. Ronald Reagan would say in difficult times, it's a wonderful time to be alive. We're lucky not to live in pale and timid times. We've been blessed with the opportunity to stand for something. Corey Ten Boom tells a story in her book, The Hiding Place, that she was on a train with her father. They were out to buy watches and parts for the watches. And as they're traveling and as children do, she just asked questions. She asked her father, where do babies come from? And he didn't answer, he didn't respond to her. And she was wondering, they got to their destination. He just ignored her and didn't respond at all. And when they got to their destination, he took his case and he said, Corey, would you take that case and carry that off the train for me? And she reached down and she tried to pick it up and she tugged and she pulled and she couldn't even lift it off the ground. She says, Daddy, I can't. And he said, it's the same way with knowledge. Some things are too heavy for children. And when they're older and when they're ready and they're stronger, then they can carry things on their own. And in the meantime, we carry those things for them. Board members, superintendent, I've had so many comments and so many people come to me, constituents, my constituents, your constituents, and people across the state, so concerned about what you talked about, age appropriate, about materials being age appropriate for our children in schools. As you know, I passed some legislation in 2022 to deal with that. We're still looking at others to do that. We passed legislation in 2019 to deal with the policies of how do we prevent even the grooming types of practices where children may be sexually abused. We know that one in four girls, one in six boys are sexually abused before they turn eighteen. Utah's not exempt from that. The most recent data we have is one in ten children in schools are sexually assaulted. And not from other children and the data and studies that we have on that. And as you know, just last month, we had an incident in West Jordan High School where a student was sexually abused by a teacher in the classroom. These are serious issues. We have in Jordan District, I would say in West Jordan High School, we have fifteen books that rate four out of five on the scale that they're not appropriate, they're not age appropriate for children. And yet, the, what is it called, folio? Still shows that those are in the schools. In the district, in the district, we have sixty-four books that show on folio that are fours or fives that by definition are not age appropriate for children at all. And yet, they're in the schools. In Jordan District, there are at least forty materials that were deemed to have no serious value for minors in other districts. And yet, in Jordan District, those materials are there. Other districts have said, we don't even need to do the, review them as a whole under seventy-six, ten, twelve, twenty-seven, which is one of the standards in the HB three seventy-four that we passed last year. This is a concern. I don't want to raise blame. I hope things don't come across that way. This is an issue and in a compulsory education system, school needs to be the safest place on earth. Parents trust their children. They're compelled to put their children in school. They have some other options, but we have a compulsory education system. This needs to be the safest place on earth. There are plenty of studies I could provide to you that the sexualization of the environment, there's a correlation between sexualization and sexual exploitation and sexual abuse. I'm here to simply plead that we all work together to de-sexualize our schools and our classrooms completely. Some things are too heavy for children to carry and it's up to us to carry them for them until they're stronger and until they're ready. And I hope that you will work with us, that we will not rest. We won't stop until we've made our schools the safest place on earth because there are some things that children just cannot carry. We should not expect them to carry, that we carry them for them. So thank you for what you do. I hope that you will work with us to make our schools the safest place on earth, particularly when it comes to things that are so precious as the virtue of our children. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say. And I commit to you, we'll continue to work with you going forward on these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Mer Staggs.
Well, thank you for your time tonight. I do appreciate your service. As one who gets to sit up at a dais at least twice a month, I understand how much work it is and appreciate your service. I tried to maybe throw down a couple of bullet points and somewhat articulate my thoughts for tonight. I wanted to start out by first saying that we've been able to work together in the past with respect to improving the safety for our kids. When I first was elected mayor in 2018, we had our school safety roundtable that we started that so many of you participate in. And it's been a great experience. From the very first time we, at that meeting, we were able to jointly, you know, arrive at a need for more school resource officers and our city took immediate action to do that. And I thank the school district's participation in that. We also, in that same meeting, talked about the mental health of our students. Again, the school has nothing, or the city has nothing to do with respect to setting the curriculum or with funding the schools, but these are our kids. I have two of my children in Jordan School District. And so I feel like we're making pretty good strides on those two issues with respect... And so I feel like we're making pretty good strides on those two issues with respect to public safety and also with the physical safety of students and also with the mental, uh, health. I'm here tonight to talk about an issue that I think has become, uh, pretty alarming and unfortunately I don't think is getting the attention that it deserves and it's what Ken, Representative Ivory, was just talking about. And that is inappropriate materials and pornographic material in schools. As mayor, really I view it as my number one job to protect the health and safety of all of our residents. And I've heard from scores of residents about the concerns of inappropriate materials in schools. I receive emails, phone calls. To a large extent, I need to tell you, they feel like they are not being heard. Um, I even, we had our city council even send out an email back in September highlighting this issue. There was a little bit of back and forth. Ultimately, we still haven't even met on this. I want you to know that I stand willing and able and ready to help in any way that we can, uh, to fight this. But at the end of the day, this filth needs to be removed from our schools. There's over a hundred volumes that one parent organization has put together, a hundred volumes still in Jordan School Districts that clearly violate the law. And I see no justifiable reason for these to be in schools, none whatsoever. There's absolutely no educational value that it's providing. It's just so destructive. There's so much, as Ken highlighted, there's so much out there that talks about how toxic, um, this, this is and the effects that it has on kids long-term. We can't protect every kid everywhere, but we can right here in our own backyard. And, you know, I remember long ago, not too long ago, that is, about three years ago when we had COVID, that kids were forced to wear masks, right? That was for their protection. But here we have a very legitimate public health crisis, one that the state has recognized back in 2016. And we appear incredibly lax about addressing this issue that has, again, demonstrable, very negative consequences. And I think right now we have to take action. Um, the, the time for talk is over. We've seen an entire school year go by. I do not want another school year to go by with these volumes still at the disposal of kids. Um, it's within your power to set policy that you can do that. And one issue that I've heard repeatedly is that the process it takes, one has to go through is per school. And really what ought to happen is if one volume is found to be inappropriate in one school, it ought to be eliminated district-wide. I mean, we don't, we would never just ban somebody from a school that's dealing drugs or other harmful substance. We would lock them up. We would get them out of the district altogether. And that's what we need to do. So again, we stand as a city, willing, ready and able, uh, to help in this issue. We've worked collaboratively together in the past to address health and safety, um, of our, of our students and we're ready to do so again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stags. And as they've both noted, we've had, we've had very good working relationships with both of you and, and appreciate you being here and we'll continue to work with you. Okay, um, patron comments, we have three people that have signed up in person and do we have online ones also today? No online ones? Okay. So we are gonna start with Kristen Flandreau and then we will have the kids and parents of Riverside Elementary on deck. So Kristen.
Three minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Kristen Flandreau. I am the mother of five, all of who, whom have been raised going to Jordan School District Schools. Currently, one student at Fort Harriman Middle and one student at Mountain Ridge High School. Thank you for your time and service that you give to this community. I don't want to be here. I shouldn't need to be here for this. As someone whose first exposure to explicit literature was in the form of a required reading book in high school class, and as someone who has had a front row seat to the devastating effects of pornography abuse by family members who were exposed to harmful material as young people, I feel particularly compelled to address this issue of pornographic books in our school libraries. I find it very puzzling and frustrating that Jordan School District's sensitive materials policy is to retain or remove challenged books on a school-by-school basis. Why is material that is deemed harmful and in violation of state law in one school still allowed to be offered to minors in another school in the district? For example, my husband recently challenged the reprehensible book, Living Dead Girl, at a high school my son attends. The decision was to retain it, yet this same book has been challenged and removed from West Jordan High School. Are the students who attend there somehow more important to protect from obscene material than the students in my school? This is indefensible. I was tempted, as has occurred in other school district meetings across the country, to read the graphic filth from some of the books that are currently offered for our students in school classes and libraries to make my point here. I believe we all know how uncomfortable that would be for everybody attending. Yet that filth is, this moment sitting on the shelf at a school near you or worse, in the hands of a child near you, offered, under the guise of education. I am asking that the Jordan School District's sensitive material policy be revisited immediately and include the following directives. Any book found in violation of law should be removed from all schools in the district. Implementation of a regularly updated and transparent list of current book challenges and reviews district-wide, along with decisions made. Currently Davis, Washington County and Granite School Districts have this available on their library policy pages. Temporary restriction of the books being challenged while they go through the review process, up to 60 days allowed for the review process, is 60 more days of possible exposure. Washington, Canyons and other districts enforce this. Prompt and dated acknowledgement from the district when an appeal is received. One last comment, my focus has been on preventing unhealthy and potentially devastating damage to our minor students, who by the way, are not old enough to drink or smoke because it may be harmful to their physical health. But what of those students who have already been hurt and abused at the hands of adults and those who should protect them? Can you imagine the further harm that some of this media being offered to them in what should be a safe space of learning can do and is doing? I have a family member in this category as well. I know we cannot protect children from everything but you, who I'm hoping really do want what's best for our kids, for my kids. I implore you to fully enforce, enforce the laws that have been put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Riverside, and then after that we'll have Emma Nordquist.
My name is Henry and this is my classmate Samantha. We're students at Riverside Elementary and are here today with our parents to bring your attention to our concern and frustration over school lunchtimes. The 15 minutes we get to eat our lunch every day is not enough, especially for those who have to go through the lunch line to get their food. Here are some quotes from a few students at Riverside. "It's so short, I never have enough time to eat." Third grader. "I don't feel after lunch, I don't feel full after lunch. It's so hard to learn the rest of the day because I never have time to finish my lunch." Fifth grader.
I think we should get more time because people get all the, this nutritious food and don't have enough time to eat it. And all those oranges, unopened cartons of milk, uneaten bananas go into the trash and are wasted. Third grader.
As parents, we are afraid our kids are learning unhealthy eating, eating habits. When they have to scarf down their food and are plagued with worries about not finishing and possibilities of being hungry later in class, it can add unneeded stress on their young bodies and minds. As the Jordan School District policy states, "School lunch periods will be scheduled to allow students adequate and appropriate time to move through lines and eat and enjoy a full lunch. Schools will examine the relationship between lunch periods, instructional periods and recess to determine the schedule most conducive to healthy eating habits." It would appear from our experiences that our schools are not allowing enough time for lunch. Also, across the district, school lunch times vary between 20 and 15 minutes without consistency. Riverside is a Title I school and we have heard from our principal that almost all the Title I schools in Jordan School District only get 15 minutes, which we would think it would be the opposite since we are Title I, that our students would receive more time for lunch. Our children should be learning to eat and enjoy healthy foods and listening to their bodies when they're full and satisfied.
We know there's a lot to juggle with schedules, lesson plans and regulations, but we hope you look into lengthening lunchtime so our stomachs are full and our minds are more alert to help us succeed in the classroom.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It's great to have kids here. I wonder if this is the beginning of their political careers right here. Emma Nordquist.
Hello there, Jordan School District Board members. Thanks for listening. I'm Emma Nordquist, a student currently attending Joel P. Jensen Middle School. I've come today to propose that Joel P. Jensen needs to be remodeled. I've written a petition and taken it around the school for students, teachers and other administrators to, administrators to sign. I got 150 signatures. You should be able to see them on the PDF, those in the email Mrs. Dean sent to you. There is also a Google Doc in that email. On it is the petition along with an addendum. I strongly encourage you to read it because I will not have time to bring up every point in it today. Okay. Joel P. Jensen needs to be remodeled. It was built in 1984 and could really use some changes in the classrooms, bathrooms and the auditorium. Several of, of us students have recently visited, visited West Jordan Middle School. We were amazed at how nice it was there. It isn't fair that a school seven minutes away from us is 35 years younger than ours. We would enjoy our school being more like theirs and think it would increase the learning experience. The first way to increase our learning experience is to remodel the classrooms. In almost every classroom, there is a fake carpeted wall. There are cracks in each one of these and we can hear the other students on the other side of the wall during class. This makes it really hard to focus. Another thing that would make the learning experience better is to add more windows. Joel P. Jensen has very few small windows. On the other hand, West Jordan Middle School has tons of huge ones. If there were more windows at Joel P., it would make the environment a more uplifting, happy place like West Jordan. A second way to increase our learning experience would to, be to remodel the bathrooms. Each bathroom in West Jordan has six stalls, while all, while ours only have three. This makes it really easy for stalls not to be available. We either have to wait and be tardy or hold it. It's a lose-lose situation. Our bathrooms frequently have, have out of order toilets that leak, making the bathrooms, classrooms and hallways stink. Also, when there are only three stalls in each bathroom and one or more of them are out of order, how are we supposed to be on time to class? Please remember, there is a simple solution to these problems. Model the bathrooms and give them more stalls. The final reason to remodel our school is the auditorium. Both West Jordan and Joel P. Jensen ha, ha, school have, um, an auditorium, but West Jordan's is much nicer. They have nice bolted-down auditorium chairs that are extremely comfortable. We, however, have regular uncomfortable classroom chairs that are not bolted down. We also have no lighting on the stairs to guide us to our seats. Once the house lights go out, good luck getting anywhere. You can easily trip on your way to your seat and fall down. The chairs below can't even catch you when they fall. They fall with you. To conclude, we, the students, teachers and administrators of Joel P. Jensen Middle School would greatly appreciate a remodel of our school. This includes remodeling the classrooms, bathrooms and the auditorium to help our learning experience. Lots of other schools that were built around the time ours was have gotten way better remodels than us. They look and feel a lot better than Joel P. Shouldn't we be able to have the same opportunities as they have? We thank you for your time and look forward to your decision on whether or not to remodel our school.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. Thank you all for being here. Board members, I will forward the spreadsheet onto you so that you've got contact information of the people that spoke. Our, next I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, but I am going to ask if we can separate out D., the school land trust plans. So can I get someone to make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B and C?
I make the, the motion to approve consent agenda items A, B and C.
A motion by Ms. Richards, second-
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dean.
I didn't hear that. What, what?
To approve, to accept the consent, to approve the consent agenda items A, B and C. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, I'm gonna make the motion on D. I move to approve the consent agenda item D. for school land trust plans for the 2023-24 school year with the, with the provision that the Salt Lake Academy be given conditional approval.
I'll second that.
Um, and so is there a discussion to that motion? Okay, I'll explain that then, where I'm coming from. Uh, the Salt Lake Academy plan was not clear to me. The, I mean, they stated what, what their goal was and then what they wanted to spend the money on was TVs, interactive TVs, and then they specified what they were gonna do to buy the TVs and didn't tie them back to the goal. And I was left unclear about what the tie to the academic goal was and how they were going to implement it in order to achieve the greatest academic need. Um, so I would like to ask that, you know, give, give the school until May 30th, but if they will update their plan and bring it back to us, I would appreciate that. We do, in order for funding to go forward, we need to have these approved by May 1st, so I'm saying yes on conditional approval, but would like to see that brought back. And then I have another concern too, that they may not have a fully functioning school community council, looked from their signature sheet that, that only two people were participating in the meeting. And so going forward-
Two parents, right? There's, there's a-
One parent, one principal. Um, so going forward, I would like to ask us as a board to, and we can discuss this further, but attend their SCC, attend an SCC meeting or two, to assign someone from our board to do that or to provide whatever help to make sure that they're functioning. So those are my concerns on that plan. Any discussion?
Will, will there be another school community council? So they'll need to just call a school community council to, well, I see now that that's obvious, so.
Yeah, yeah, good, good question though. You're right.
I'll make sure that's done and we'll bring it up to our board.
Okay, any other discussion to that? Okay, so our motion is to approve the school land trust plans for 23-24 school year with a conditional approval for the trust land plan for the Salt Lake Academy. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'll bring that back to the board.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
I move that we accept the general business consent agenda, I mean, the consent agenda items A, B, C, D and E.
I'll second. Okay, motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. George to accept consent agenda items A through E. All in favor of that motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes unanimously. All right, can I get a motion for the first bid?
I'll make the motion that we approve the Mountain Ridge High School Chromebook licenses for $148,072.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Robinson, second by Ms. Richards to approve the Mountain Ridge High School bid for HP Chromebooks and licenses. Is there any discussion to that motion?
I have some discussion.
Hey, go ahead. Hey, go ahead.
As I was reviewing some of the TSSA and land trust plans, I noticed several of them, including Mountain Ridge High School, I believe, had set aside some of the funds for Chromebooks. And so I guess I'm curious why this, is this fund, is this a bid? Let me just look at it real quick. Is that coming out of, what, is that coming out of the general fund? Is that what they're asking? Budget. It is coming out of TSSA. Okay.
So we did just get done approving the TSSA plans, so we approved that this expenditure's okay as part of their plan. But then if any bids that are over eighty thousand have to come to us. So we could get bids throughout the year. That's part of these TSSA plans that we just approved.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But it's also coming from their technology fund. That's what the bid says.
From the high school's technology fund.
Yes, so a combination.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion to that motion? Okay, all in favor of approving the bid for the Mountain Ridge High School Chromebooks and licenses, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion for B?
I motion that we approve the bid for refinishing and repair of wood floors.
Second.
A motion by Ms. George, second by Ms. Richards to approve the bid for refinishing and repair of wood floors. Is there discussion to that motion?
I noticed we only had one bidder on this.
Mr. Prucey, do you want to respond to that?
Hi, Kurt Prucey, Director of Yeah, that, that's a challenge that we're having with some of the, the things that a vendor can do for us. We sent this out originally and only received one bidder. And so we send it out a second time inviting some others that we thought might be interested and received only one bidder. So they have worked with us in the past. They've done a really good job for us. They have the capacity to do it and in the time schedule. As you might have read in the justification statement, we do do them, several of them in a summer, and so it really does take a crew, a specialized crew and an experienced crew to do that. And so I feel, well, I, I guess that's why no one else responds, is they just don't have the capacity and this firm or this company does. Sorry, long-winded, but that was the best answer I can give.
And you're comfortable with, with the amount then? Is that a reasonable amount for the work being done?
Yeah, it is specialized. We, the custodial services crew does a great job with a lot of the floors in the district, but these are specialized where they have to really strip everything down, paint it, and do it all. And, and our crews don't have that ability, but yeah, we, there is a little increase from what in years past. But I think everything's increasing and they're comfortable with it as well.
Is there further discussion? All right, so the motion is to approve the bid for refinishing and repair of wood floors. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion for C?
I move that we approve bid number C, Facility Services Rooftop Unit Replacement at Oker Hills Middle School.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Richards to approve the rooftop unit replacement at Oker Hills Middle School. Is there discussion to that motion?
Just a, a general question, I guess, on, on this one, on the previous one. How do these things show up in our budget? Are they gonna show up? I'm just wondering how we're gonna pay for these. We've, I've been going through the budget the past few weeks. How do these items show up in our budget?
Mr. Larson?
I love that question. This, this item's gonna come out of the capital budget. And that is a separate fund. So if you go to the budget book in, so I'm gonna see if I can pull it up, but there is a separate, separate pages for the capital budget. And one of those line items on that budget is for a heating and cooling budget. And so this, this item is indicating it's gonna come out of that district-wide heating and cooling budget. So that's the line item it's gonna come out of. And if, if you want, I'll send you the page number. If you wanna hold on, I can get there pretty quick.
I guess my concern is, have we budgeted for this?
Yeah.
It's, okay, it's not something above and beyond what we've already, what we're already expecting to come out of this particular fund, the capital fund.
Again, great question, and the budget is set aside. We have a preliminary budget that we'll go over in June of what we think will come. But these type of capital issues, a lot of them are surprises. You know, at home, I don't necessarily know my water heater's gonna go out tonight or something else. Same thing with our schools. As, as awesome as our facilities folks are, they can't predict that stuff either. So stuff happens, and what they'll do, though, is they will transfer or move between line items to say, ooh, we needed a little more in this one and maybe we could do with a little less on this one. So they're transferring within their own budgets to say, oh, well, I've got a need on this particular one and they'll just move it up and take it from, reduce another line item there where we may not have needed as much. Does that help? How'd I do, Dave?
Now, just, Mr., Brian, just so you know, every month, if you look at what we just approved, there's a huge list of expenditures. So a budget is, well, we're allocating this dollar amount for the needs we have. And you can go through the expenditures and say, oh, those were the actual expenditures.
Yeah. I guess part of, part of my concern is that, now, I may be remembering this incorrectly. I think I asked a question in a, in a finance committee meeting and and I think John mentioned that I was remembering it incorrectly, but when we were talking about approving an amount for the new math curriculum, I thought I asked, well, do we have the money for that? And the response was, it's in the budget. And now I'm looking at our current numbers and it's showing as an additional expense for the next five years, which indicated to me, well, it wasn't in the budget. We're adding it to our budget now. And so when items like this come up that we're approving, that's my question is, well, do we have the money? I guess that's my main question. Do we have the money for this?
And I would point out item E. Look at item E. That says, no, there's nothing in the budget for this. It would have to be allocated from some other source. But items A through D are being taken from a budget item where there is money available for that. So the math curriculum looked like item E. If you go back to the agenda, the math curriculum looked like item E to be determined by the board, new budget item. So that's how it'll list. If it's, if there's no money allocated for this, it'll be listed like that. New budget item or to be determined by the board.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? We have a motion to approve the rooftop unit replacement at Oker Hills Middle School. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Is there anyone opposed? Say no. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion for D?
I'll make the motion to accept the bid for carpet replacement at the JATC North.
Second. Okay, motion by Ms. Richards, second by Ms. George to approve the bid for carpet replacement at JATC North. Is there discussion to that motion?
I have another discussion. How did these items get on here, A through E? Who makes the determination that we're going to bring these before the board and approve them? We had a, a young girl get up and say, please replace the bathroom stalls or please, you know, fix my school. And apparently, these, these five things are more important than that because they're on our agenda. Who puts these items on the agenda? Who makes that determination that these are the things we're going to be paying for or potentially paying for?
Who wants to go? Mr. Larson? Or Mr. Roster? Mr. Larson, okay.
Those capital budgets would go through the facilities committee to prioritize, like a renovation of a school like that is gonna be a very significant outlay of capital. And so those would go through the facilities committee that then prioritizes things and brings those back to the board to have further discussion about what reaches the top or what may have to be postponed. An item like a, oh, what was it? The rooftop unit. Something like this is a smaller item that will fit within a, a more of an annual budget that is anticipated that across all of our schools, we're gonna have some heating and air conditioning issues we're gonna have to deal with. And so we have that, that budget just kind of general district-wide. But anything that's specific and large would go through the, the board's facilities committee to determine if that rises to the top. And there'll be a time then for the board to vote on that priority of where that will land.
In fact, that time will be coming up fairly soon. We'll get a list from the facilities committee of all the projects that they are considering and we'll have the chance to, you know, give input to that. And then in August, as a board, we'll actually vote on which projects that, that we want done. And those are, so the things that come through the summer project are, you know, the bigger, the bigger things. They're not the routine things. So remodels would come through our summer project process. Interestingly, if I remember right, like back, our bid right there on, on C for the rooftop units, at one point in time, those were coming through summer projects too. And then as a, as a board, we said, you know, we, air conditioning and heating is just a given. We shouldn't have to make a decision on whether or not to have that. We need to have our schools heated and cooled. And so we created a separate category for that several years ago.
And the same thing with roofing. We did the same thing with roofs.
Good question. Is there other discussion? I noticed there was only one bid on this one. I'm assuming, is that the same answer as on, on B for the floors?
This one was, we just went through the state contract, so that process has already been vetted. The installer as well as the carpet that's being purchased is, is being done through a state contract. And it, Mr. Barnett, a little bit clarification on that. We have our facility assessment where we have our maintenance coordinators go out and meet with all of the principals. And they put all of their lists, give us a list of some of the items that they would like to see at their individual schools. We give the large ticket items for the board to make the decisions on. Some of it comes out of our district-wide capital budgets that's been allocated from the board. And then a lot of them are work orders that we just generate work orders for. And like flooring and HVAC, we try to keep like a five-year list of projects in carpeting. We have, like I said, our maintenance coordinators will go out and evaluate the schools and prioritize the condition of the carpeting. And so we have a pretty good idea on carpeting, which schools are gonna be coming up next. HVAC can be a little bit trickier and so can roofs because we'll, some of them can deteriorate a little bit quicker than is anticipated or parts become not available. But we have very qualified people out there evaluating all types of material in our schools.
Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve the bid for carpet replacement at JATC North. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
President, I motion to move item E to a future agenda item determined by the board's executive committee.
There's a second. Okay, we'll have a motion by Mr. Dunford, second by Mr. Robinson to move item E to a future agenda item as determined by the executive committee. Any discussion to that motion?
Is there a way to approve part of it and then move the money part to a different, to a different meeting?
Boy, any approval here would have to be, it's a bid, so it would have to be approving the dollar amount.
Okay, so I misunderstood in study session then.
Okay, we did discuss this in, at the beginning of our study session. Also, and we'll discuss it at future study sessions. So the motion is to move this to a future agenda item as determined by the executive committee. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have one no, so that passes six to one. Ms. Richards was the no. Next up, we have a budget hearing. This is part of our regular process to amend the budget a couple of times throughout the year. And I will turn the time to Mr. Dunford for that.
One of the most important responsibilities that an elected official has, especially a school board member, is to safeguard the funds that come in from taxpayers. We're very mindful of where these funds come from and the sacrifice involved in receiving them. So I personally, and I know enough of you feel the same way, that is a very, very significant responsibility, as you've heard from Mr. Barnett's comments today, is he feels that same responsibility to safeguard the funds and their expenditures. To that end, it had been, it had been the practice of this board to amend the budget once. So here's the budget, here's the money that we've allocated for each category to be spent. Go ahead and spend your budgets. And then as amendments trickle in and changes are made, we were making one lump sum amended budget. And we felt years ago that, you know what, we'd really like to digest these in chunks so that we can see what changes are we proposing. So the board at the time proposed, in addition to our regular June budget meeting where the budget is set, that in December, which was a good time as the school year begins and we begin to see those expenditures come in and we've hired different people and we had to do, make this adjustment, we held, we decided to hold a budget hearing in December. So let's, let's authorize all the amendments to the budget. Oh, this budget is being tweaked this much. This budget is being tweaked this much. For these reasons, we decided to do that in December. And then we decided a spring budget hearing would also be appropriate that would be a few months out before the culmination and all the approvals had to be made. So this is now our spring budget hearing where we are gonna propose, that Mr. Larson is gonna propose, here are the changes that we are recommending be made to this year's budget. So for example, new board members, when we, when the superintendent says, we're gonna hire this person and here's their salary, to hire this person, and here's their salary, we don't necessarily approve it in that meeting. This is the moment we are approving those. This is the moment where the rubber hits the road, and we are allocating that dollar amount to be added to this budget for that expenditure. So we have tried to make a mental note of the changes that have been proposed, and Mr. Larson is going to present some of those changes, and why are they, why are they being proposed? And this is the moment, your approval today will stamp all the approvals that we've kind of given in advance, saying, yes, I could approve that change. This is the moment you'll approve it. So that's kind of our introduction, is we're going to have a spring budget hearing, where we propose a few amendments to the budget, and this will be the Board's opportunity to say, yes, I support that. So with no further ado, our business administrator is now going to present those changes that are being proposed to the budget, as it was presented, as it was approved in June. Mr. Larson.
Thank you. And this is the cumulative changes from June. So we did some in December, but now we're accumulating others as we go through personnel costs, health insurance costs, retirement costs, every, everything. And I would like to acknowledge two gentlemen in the audience, Dan Ellis and Jason Mott. We just spent yesterday and today at a meeting of school business people across the state, and I had many people come up to me indicating how jealous they were of my finance team. And I am very appreciative of their work, their very hard work, late into the evenings, I know, because one evening I scared one of them very much when I came up to say hi. But a lot of hard work. I very much appreciate them doing this. Okay, so on Board talks, you have the revised budget for the general fund. In April, we do revisions to the general fund, and then we'll do some more revisions in June with the larger budget hearing. On this document, you have the original budget that was done in June, and then the amended, and then the change between them. Much of the changes here are due to carryovers or grants that have come through that we're now bringing in. But there's also a lot of fine tuning of individual amounts with personnel that maybe someone retired, maybe someone just left our employment, maybe someone chose not to sign up for health insurance, maybe somebody's on a different retirement plan. And so all of those unique situations are gone through for this budget amendment. That's what makes this one unique from the December one. So I'll highlight a couple of things. On the local sources, we're showing an increase of local sources. Some of that is property taxes, approximately 11.6 million. But interest revenue has also gone up quite a bit. If you've watched the markets at all, our interest earnings have gone up correspondingly. Part of our meetings, one of the classes I went to yesterday talked about how interest is going to be coming down pretty soon as well. So be prepared for that. But as of today, it's up. So that's about 6.8 million. Coming down to state sources, much of the difference here, of course, the state money is predominantly in the form of grants. So we have some special education money, T S S A money, land trust money, preschool money, CTE money, all making those grants reflect what the state has indicated is available. As a reminder, we budget for the entire grant to be spent in the current year, because the budget reflects what's authorized, not a prediction of what they will actually do. So that the program directors have an accounting of what they are authorized to utilize. So it's not that all of these will be spent this year, but they are authorized this year. With those grants coming in for the revenue, we have to do a corresponding increase to our spending, because the grant needs to offset, we call them zero budgets actually, because they don't have an impact to the bottom line. Within the federal line, there is a significant change there, and that is because we have a significant grant there in our A R P funds, or COVID money, that is there, that has been authorized, but just not fully spent yet. That's 19.2 million for this year. Then we have a little bit of federal special education money and Medicaid money. Yes, I did say Medicaid. The school district has substantial Medicaid work that we do with kids. I can't remember who, but someone was really surprised by that at one time. In the expenditures, then, we're making all those changes I mentioned earlier, and maybe as we come down the rows here, instruction actually comes out pretty close to where the original budget was. That's, I wish I could say that was just excellent work, but there's going to be a lot of luck to that, too. So that one didn't change much. But in the student category, we do have some additions there for, once again, Medicaid, Special Education, the Infant Toddler Grant that we received. And we also have quite a few open unfilled positions within this category of student services, services for students. In the services for instructional staff, we have, the A R P grant is the substantial part of that, 5 million. And then school administration would be the increasing, increase of staff in that area. The rest of these, I think are pretty, are smaller, so I think I'll leave those alone. As a reminder, down below where it says inter-fund transfer out, that is the line where we budget for covering the foundation's operations cost, or their department costs, their personnel, postage, paper, that kind of stuff. And we will have probably more changes in June, and we'll, we are working on the budget book now to do all of the funds, and have this all wrapped up for our budget hearing in June. Does the Board have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Under support services, expenditures, support services, students.
Yes.
The original budget is right around 32 million. And what I'm, what I'm understanding from this is that we underestimated by 15 million what we would be spending there?
Well, I wouldn't say underestimate, because a lot of this is going to be grants that flow from one year to the next. So when we, when we came to the Board in June of last year, we would have, I'll take Medicaid as an example, we would have assumed that the Medicaid budget would have been spent out. The revenues coming in, expenditures going out. So that would have been all budgeted into fiscal year '22. Then we come into fiscal year '23, and we realize, okay, that wasn't all spent out, so now we need to amend the federal revenue and the student services expenditure for that, for those Medicaid services. So we're going to increase the budget to match those funds that are available in the Medicaid fund. So it rolls from one year to the next.
We don't, we don't necessarily have 15 million in expenses, but that's where we're going to, that's where we have to put that money.
Yeah, because there's $15 million worth of authorized things that are, have accumulated in that category, so we want to increase the budget to reflect that. And I wouldn't, I'm not prepared with a projection to tell you what that student line would probably end up being at the end of the year. On the paper, though, you do have the prior years, and then this final budget, so you could probably make an estimate that we're not going to spend all 15 of that increase, especially since there's approximately 5 million there of unfilled positions. So certainly, those, that's not going to be spent coming out there. And then we also have special education, infant toddler, Medicaid grants in there. Does that help you, Mr. Barnett? Okay.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion?
President Miller, I move that we approve the amended budget as presented by Business Administrator Larson.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dunford, and second by Ms. Richards, to approve the amended budget as presented. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this motion? Okay, seen none. Is there any further discussion by the Board? Seen none, all in favor of the motion to approve the amended budget for the '22-'23 fiscal year, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you to Mr. Larson and to your team for all of your work on this, and thank you to our Finance Committee for your help in bringing this to us. Our next agenda item is a recommendation to approve the revisions to Board Policy E 404, Safety and Security. Ms. George, do you want to speak to that process?
So as a Board, we make it a priority to review our ends policies, and this has been one that we've been discussing for several meetings now regarding safety. We made a couple of adjustments to the existing policy regarding ways that we can measure our success in keeping physically and emotionally safe spaces for our students, and how we can communicate with our communities when there are emergencies. So we have discussed it, we're at a point now where we feel like we're ready to go ahead and vote.
Does anyone have any questions on it? All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed revisions to Board Policy E 404, Safety and Security.
I'll second it.
A motion by Mr. Barnett, second by Mr. Robinson, to approve the proposed revisions to Board Policy E 404, Safety and Security. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address this issue? Okay, seen none. Is there any discussion by the Board? Seen none, all in favor of the motion to approve revisions to Board Policy E 404, Safety and Security, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. And I would just like to thank Ms. George for taking this on, and all of your work on this throughout the process, and also our administration for your help with that. Thank you. Our next item is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Godfrey.
Thank you. I just want to briefly mention that one of our schools has received the Purple Star Designation from the state. It is a national program that recognizes schools that have created support structures for military families, so that they're connecting with military families and providing good support for students who are transitioning in and out of school. Like I said, it's a national designation, and I talked with our Community Engagement Specialist, Tammy Pfeifer, who's here a while back, about how we could make sure that we're doing everything we can to be a friendly environment for military families. We saw that this award is available. And so Westland Elementary has been given that award. They'll receive that in the fall and be honored in a state school board meeting. And I may invite them here as well, but I wanted to give you a little preview and tell you about that exciting news. It involves having information on the website, having student ambassadors that are in place to help students transition, putting some professional development in place, so just some things that they do to make sure that it's a welcoming environment and a supportive environment for students and military families. So I appreciate their efforts in that direction.
Thank you, that's great. All right, next is committee reports and comments by Board members. Does anyone have anything to report or comment on?
I do. I recently attended the Salt Lake County Parks and Rec Committee, and something that I just think is of note is that they're putting together their master plan, and I think that it would, well, I just, I know Murray School District has an education center on the Jordan River Parkway Trail, and I just think that as the county is putting this together, it might be a good time for the Board to try to work with the county in the master plan, and maybe finding a place or way to have an education center somewhere in the district.
Just FYI, there is a city council member, Tish Brooker in Riverton City, that has talked to me before about an education center along the Jordan River. She's very much, and she's on the Jordan River Commission, and very much been looking into it, so.
So is it, is it a good thing to try and pursue, or?
We've actually have pursued that recently with another city that brought a proposal to us, so we've signed on as being supportive of that endeavor. It's a great idea.
Thank you.
I was just going to say about that, we had pursued something that would be inherent in a STEM center with Utah State, and part of that, if I'm not mistaken, is the question park, and how that's changed hands, and we would have some property there. So we've, this is something we've talked about a lot, just never done.
Yeah, I was just thinking that now as they're putting together the master plan, which, how often does that happen? Like every eight years? It might be good to try and get something, join a school district education center somewhere, like it could be up in Yellow Fork Canyon, or somewhere along the river, or Beam Creek, I don't know. I just thought it might be a good time to try and get something like that on the county's master plan.
Excellent.
Anyone else?
I have something. We've talked in the past that Ridge View will be going to the New Flex School. We wanted to do a grand opening, but spring, or groundbreaking, spring has not sprung yet, so we've been pushing that and pushing that, and now it's, they're getting into their testing. And so the day we'd like to bring forward to you is May 24th, and we'll do an afternoon, if you can count your, check your calendars and see if you can all make that. They have cabinet meeting in the morning, so something like one. I'll get back with you on the exact time. If there's any conflicts with that, please let me know. We'd love to have you there. I just said afternoon. I got to double-check. I got to double check and see what time their lunches are and what's the best time for the school, but I can get back with you on that. Later is better, four o'clock. Anyways, they have broke the ground already, which is traditionally when we have groundbreakings they are, but they work so fast, they may have the walls up in the ceiling or the roof, I don't know. But it's a nice opportunity to send the community and the kids that will be going there. This is a unique one because we know the exact kids that will be attending this school, the second, third, and fourth graders. So anyways, I'll, I'll firm that date up, send it to you, Brian, and I'll work with Sandy and Scott and administration on.
No boundaries.
On that. Yeah, no boundary changes. Yay for that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Does she have one?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Number.
Finance Committee would like to announce to the board and to the public, we'd like to put this on public record, that the Finance Committee at a future board meeting, not today, will be bringing a proposal to consider increasing lunch prices. We will explain why we are proposing that and what that proposal is, but we just wanted to put it on public record that that is coming at a future moment. We don't want the public to say that no notice was given. So be advised that after 14 years of not increasing lunch prices, we will be bringing a proposal to perhaps increase lunch prices. So to be seen in the future.
14 years ago being 2000.
2009, 2010.
There's no student in the Jordan School District that has seen a lunch increase. Impressive.
At least not at school. We've all seen them in our homes. They've done an amazing job keeping our prices really low for a lot of years.
I do just want to make it known that the Facilities Committee will be meeting next week, in a week, and we will be bringing the summer projects bids and the ongoing plan at that time.
Excellent. Okay. I have a report from Jordan Education Foundation. As Dr. Godfrey mentioned, the awards banquet was fantastic and thank you to all of you who were able to come to that. Boy, it's just really neat to see those teachers get the awards and the student scholarships. Man, yeah, yeah, it just reminds you of why we do what we do, helping kids. The next event is the Challenge Run and I've mentioned this before, it's May 13th. Spread the word, sign up, get your friends and family. It's a great fundraiser for the foundation so that they continue, can, continue to support the great programs that they support. And then Utah School Boards Association, my report there is we had a two-day-long board meeting last week in which we focused on the strategic plan. And the USBA School Boards Association in the past really has been focused on building, building better boards is their slogan, so training board members, providing professional development to board members. There's been, I guess, a shift recently or a desire for School Boards Association to focus more on advocacy work. They've always been part of the, the JLC, the Joint Leadership Committee, with superintendents and business administrators to do advocacy, but that was a lot of the focus of that meeting is, you know, the question was asked, what should USBA doing, be doing more of that they're not doing? And that was the message from lots of board members is to beef up advocacy and lobbying efforts. So that's a work in process.
What is that advocacy? What are, what are we advocating for? What does that term mean in this setting?
Right. Advocating mostly with the legislature for, on behalf of public education.
Article 10 to be followed of the Utah State Constitution.
Advocating for schools to the legislature? Is that what we're advocating?
Yes, and those, and that's, that's a work in process. So specifically what is still to come, still to be worked out, some, a lot of the ideas mentioned run advocating for local, more local control for districts and school boards was one. I mean, of course, funding is always one. So if you have input into what you think should be part of USBA's strategic plan, I, well, you know, give me a call, I'd welcome the opportunity to talk more and, and share some of those ideas because it's, it's in process. We'll be discussing it again in a future meeting. And then, then the other thing that I would welcome and put on is the legislative priorities. So the Joint Legislative Committee, which is made up of USBA, USSA, and UASBO, so school boards, superintendents, and business administrators work together to put together their legislative priorities. And they'll be meeting a couple of times in June for that and then in August is the delegate assembly when we go and vote on those priorities. So if you have input on what you think our priorities should be for the School Boards Association, I would love to hear your ideas and we'll talk about that at our next Government Relations Committee to add that to the agenda. Okay, so that's my USBA update. Does anyone have anything else?
The Flex School, just as an explanation, is when we said no boundary changes but a new school, it's that grades four, five, and six will be at the, at the new building and K three, or, yeah, K three will remain at the, at the current building. So it's just a unique way of housing students, just for those who are wondering why we're building a building and then not creating a boundary for it, so.
Great explanation.
Thank you.
And I have one more. I just want to report on LEAC. We met last week. Thank you to all seven board members who were there. I just, I loved watching you with your different groups and just listening and it was a marvelous opportunity to let teachers speak. It was very eye-opening for you. We appreciate all the comments given by teachers. Just to report, we asked them two questions about the superintendent and the board's proposal to take things off the teachers' plates and, boy, some of the things they said were home runs were unexpected to hear and I just, that was a delight. So that was a, that was a nice report and then we asked them to give us some suggestions on dealing with the vacancies among our ESP ranks, our staff ranks, and the effect that that has on teachers. So a lot of that information will come forward in negotiations as we work on a budget and negotiated packages, but I just wanted to thank all of you and the LEAC representatives for that meeting. I thought it was very successful.
Thank you. And I emailed you, two of my teachers gave me feedback that I emailed you and I actually have another one in my board that I, or in my bag that I need to get you.
Any of you received any, just pass them on to me, I will collect the master list.
Okay, I think that'd be great and then get it out to all of us.
Yep.
Thank you. And thank you, that was, was a great meeting. Well done. Okay, anything else? All right, that comes to the end of our meeting. We do need to have a closed session, though. So can I get a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go to closed session to discuss character incompetence of individuals, property, potential litigation, negotiations, and security.
I'll second it.
A motion by Ms. Dean and second by Mr. Robinson to go into closed session for character incompetence of individuals, property, potential litigation, negotiations, and security. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone who is here tonight. We appreciate you joining us.